Three hundred feet, the water trickles into trenches.
And they can't use that.
They can't use it.
Because that's the technical. They deferred a couple of months.
Yeah.
But you're laughing at that.
I'm scared. I'm scared. I'm frightened. I just laughed at that person.
Too funny.
So, did we have?
We didn't, this is-
June 10th?
No, we didn't.
We did?
Did not, I could not find it. Uh, Chris, am I correct, we don't have June 10th?
That's the only one on the list that I didn't get to.
Yeah, that's the only one that I-
I think there's actually a couple more that are on the list.
The name of the person is Curl. I had to question that. C-U-R-L.
Yo.
Just looking sound.
Which one's that? Thanks for the-
It's on, uh-
Get your face off, dude. Yeah.
I think it's the night, let me look.
Alright. We will be, we will be-
I looked it up.
Should we wait for, uh, is it ready enough? Okay. Uh, the time is now four oh one. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. Those present are Greg Halliday, Jaylen Hawks, Mary McGann, Curtis Wells, Terry Morse, Rory Paxman, Evan Clapper. Uh, it is September 17th, 2019, and, uh, I have the chief's report in front of me. Is that the first item on the agenda?
It's minutes.
The minutes, the approval of minutes. Mary?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from August 20th, 2019, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next up is approval or ratification of payment of bills.
Alright.
Grand County bills to be approved and ratified for Thompson Springs Fire District 917, 2019. Total bills $161.60. Total bills and payroll $1,231.77. Motion made by Rory Paxman. Seconded by Greg Halliday in discussion. Call for a roll call vote. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Jaylen Hawks?
Yes.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Curtis Wells?
Aye.
Terry Morse?
Yes.
Rory Paxman?
Yes.
Evan Clapper, yes. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Next up, fire chief's report. Have a copy from Mark, uh, Mark Markham was not with us. Recent incidents, August 26th, broken ankle at Thompson residence. August 28th, semi truck crash, I-70, no injuries. Equipment, engine 31 may need new batteries, keeping on charger for now. And generator needs servicing before winter, trying to get a company from Moab to come out and do the work is challenging. Uh, training, the self-contained breathing apparatus, dawning and doffing in under one-minute practice, rapid response training. Other is a joint Thompson special fi- is there an S missing there? Uh, TSSFD and MVFD inspection of Buzzard's Belly General Store in Cisco. Uh, any new business for the fire district? Any old business? Future consider- Mary?
Future considerations. We talked at a couple meetings ago about having the water board be the fire district board. What came of that? The Thompson Water Board, we thought if they could fulfill both duties.
Or- Or see if those members would be willing to-
Yeah, that's what I mean, if they would be willing to serve.
It'd probably be better to have Castle Valley-
Microphone.
Be probably be better to have Castle Valley include Cisco because we go out there anyway. When there's, when there's problems.
That's going to involve a huge amount of paperwork.
Yeah.
You know, did, was it, do we need to talk to the water board? Were they spoken to? Were they asked? Do you know?
Well, both of those are special service districts and they apply to Thompson Springs only.
But would they be willing to serve on the fire district board? Do you know?
I don't.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to them.
Maybe we should draft a letter.
Yes, draft a letter to those members of those boards and ask if they would serve. Because people that serve tend to serve.
Did, uh, is that something you're willing to do? The letter?
I want to write a letter? Yeah, I'll follow up. I'll follow, I'll follow up and write a letter and/or call.
Perfect. Any other future consideration?
So, I could call them. That would be the simplest and involve the lesson, so I will call, get the names of the people on that board and their phone numbers and call and ask them.
Great.
I can, I can bring that up to the next meeting at Thompson.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Okay.
Any other future considerations? Uh, no need for a public hearing? No need for a closed session? We have completed our agenda at 4:08, and I would adjourn this meeting of the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District at 4:08.
Good.
Which brings us over, uh, to, the time is now 4:08. I would like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Grand County Council on Tuesday, September 17th, at 2019. Those in attendance are Greg Halliday, Jaylen Hawks, Mary McGann, Curtis Wells, Terry Morse, Rory Paxman, Evan Clapper, Ruth Dillon, Chris Baird, and members of the public. Uh, first up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Whitney, would you do us the honors in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, next up, thanks for that. Approval of minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of June 4th, 2019, July 2nd, July 9th, July 16th, July 18th of 2019, August 6th, August 20th of 2019, September 3rd of 2019, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann?
Second.
Seconded by Terry Morse. Discussion. Jaylen?
Well, I'm only really prepared to vote on three of them, so I, I don't know. How do we proceed?
Is that a substitute motion?
Make a substitute motion?
Okay, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Or you could just abstain on the, uh-
I could.
Yeah.
I could do that. We have enough that are willing to vote.
I read, I read all of them.
If, if we're in agreement on the recommendations from the workshop, let's not make it any more complicated.
I got confused.
I don't know what that means. What do you mean? From the workshop?
I don't think the minutes from the recent workshop are included in that.
The only thing not included in this was the July 10th Joint Council, that wasn't in this group, but all of the others were.
I'm getting the heads up to make substitute motion to approve the minutes from June 4th, 2019, July 2nd, 2019, and July 9th, 2019.
Uh, substitute motion seconded by Rory Paxman. Discussion.
Yes.
Please.
Um, yeah, just a few changes. Start with the June 4th. There may not have been any changes. No, there weren't. The July 2nd minutes, um, under agency reports, we'll want to change the name J. Stocks to Stephen Stocks. Updating the change of form of government. I thought there was one really minor typo, but it's just like one letter, so if I find it, I'll send it to Chris. Then on July 9th, oh, that was where the typo was, very minor, under the common areas of interest, Steve White brought up the need for daycare options, changed the word "or" to "for." That's it, that's all I got.
Alright.
I mentioned it to Curtis, but on July 2nd, the person's name was Annette Curl, C-U-R-L.
So, what page is that, Mary?
That is on July 2nd, it is page in our packet.
Does it, can you see the page number though in the minutes? At the bottom, it should have page number.
I've lost it.
See, I might build it, I might build it.
Oh, here it is. I got it. It's, uh, page number three of seven on, uh, June 2nd.
Oh, I see. So, what's her last name?
Curl. C-U-R-L.
So, how are we going to do this? We're going to have a vote or-
Substitute motion. The substitute motion.
Just the substitute motion?
Yes. Substitute motion has been seconded, is on the table, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Who, who did the second on that?
Rory.
Substitute, Rory.
Okay, aye. I'll make a motion to postpone agenda item F. I, J, K, L, and M.
Till the next meeting.
Till the next meeting.
Motion made by Jaylen Hawks. Seconded by Rory Paxman. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, ratification of payment of bills. Rory?
Alright. Grand County bills to be approved and ratified 917, 2019. Total bills $1,663,042.7. Total payroll $238,516.98. Total bills and payroll $1,901,559.5.
Motion made by Rory Paxman? Seconded by Jaylen Hawks. Any discussion? I'll call for a roll call vote. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Jaylen Hawks?
Yes.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Curtis Wells?
Aye.
Terry Morse?
Yes.
Rory Paxman?
Aye.
Evan Clapper, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, is the point in the meeting to remind council members of any disclosures that they might need to make regarding tonight's discussions? Going once, going twice, seeing none, we'll move right along to general council reports and future considerations. Greg, you want to start us off?
Yep. Okay, on the 10th of September, attended the Transportation Special Service District. We're still planning on, with what money, money we have in the bank to pit, to, to fund the Jackson Street project drainage and/or finish funding it, and the Murphy Lane tie-in, uh, drainage project as well, and that's all for that. Um, the 11th, attended the Thompson Springs Special Service District. The springs are running at 100 gallons a minute, Terry? The springs are running at 100 gallons a minute still? And Thompson? You had a question about that?
I did, thank you.
Last time?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, that's all that's going on up there. Uh, on the 13th, attended the Historic Preservation. Uh, they're working on a presentation, uh, to hopefully get some funding to, uh, restore the Dewey Bridge, uh, and they're looking for some demographic information with the travel council. That's all I got.
Jaylen?
Yes, I attended the Canyonlands Healthcare Special Service District meeting. They are working towards a budget for next year. Uh, also, their CFO has gone to Washington State, but he has spent the last couple of months training the new CFO, so that seems to be working out quite well, and the board is currently in discussions and considering, um, donating a piece of property or not to the EMS Special Service District upon which to build their new building. And I'm sure everybody already knows that EMS got their-
Yeah.
-grant.
Kudos.
I don't remember if that was last, before last meeting or not. Anyway, I went to that meeting and to a person, every single board member was very, very supportive and excited to support the EMS loan grant request.
Wow.
Yeah, it was good. I didn't get beat up at all. There was one snide comment, but I took it gracefully.
Nice.
That's all.
Is that-
Well, oh, and budget advisory board meetings have happily started again. She says that's it.
Happily. Exciting times. Thanks. Mary?
On the 5th, I went to the CIB workshop, and it was impressive how, uh, the different agencies cooperated so closely on to when to apply so they're not competing against each other. There was lots of good discussion and dialogue and how to best move forward. It was a, it was a pleasant meeting, nice, as you said. On, uh, the 6th, I went to Price for John Curtis's business summit. He had asked me to be a member of a panel discussing planning for growth, and it's all about infrastructure, and I talked about, I encouraged counties that were beginning to look at tourism as an economic driver to, you know, speak with Grand County and learn what, from what we've done well and what we could have done better in planning for the, uh, impacts of tourism. It was a good, uh, conference. The highlight was, um, the mayor of Price, Michael Corce Ossol, I'm not sure if I pronounced that right. They have created what they call the Utah Coal Country Strike Team to work at transitioning, transitioning, trans-
Transitioning.
Thank you. From, uh, a extraction community to one that has different, uh, ways of, in their economy. It was very positive. They were, it was ways, they were starting to educate the people that had worked in the coal company. I mean, it was like instead of mourning the passing of something, they were embracing the future and making decisions. It was, that was the highlight of the conference for me. On the 9th, I had a phone conference, uh, about 10 million ton removal, pot tailings removal, uh, and it looks like they're going to celebrate that on, after our meeting with John Curtis on October 8th.
Excellent.
That's all?
Thanks.
Oh, and then I was gone last week, on a wonderful river trip.
Kurt?
Um, well, I'll start with a meeting I attended last week. Some of you were there to, uh, do some troubleshooting and finding a location for the EMS building that we've received funding for. Um, it was previously, uh, assumed that the Healthcare Special Service District was going to donate a piece of land, uh, for the EMS facility. Uh, infrastructure development costs, um, went unaccounted for, which triggered the pivot to remodeling the existing EMS building, and the EMS Special Service District has now pivoted back to building a new facility in which we've received funding for, and we need to find a location. So, those discussions are ongoing and, um, second, uh, discussions, um, at the UAC and state level on, uh, if transient room tax is to be reformed, how to reform transient room tax. There was something on paper that was produced by UAC this week, sent out to, uh, participating commissioners and council members. The highlights of the first proposal is to, uh, reduce the mandatory promotional, uh, percentage from 47% to 32%, but to institute a, uh, floor amount of, uh, what the promotional budgets were at the 2018 levels. And so, um, you know, they're sending that out and, and wanting to collect some feedback, and, uh, I think primarily sending that out to, uh, the tourism folks at the legislature and the state tourism, um, the Office of Tourism at the state level to kind of begin that dialogue. So, we're working to have a position for the Grand, for the Grand County Council on this proposal in two weeks. We've yet to take a formal position on the issue of TRT reform. Uh, subsequent to that going out, I received a phone call from, uh, our tourism director, and there's a group of tourism directors in the counties that are feeling like they're not being heard and not being, uh, allowed to contribute to the conversation, and so I discussed with Evan the possibility of a joint meeting with the travel council sometime soon, uh, possibly a special meeting next week. Um, ideally, we would want to have this con- well, I think we need to have this joint meeting with the travel council to discuss what, uh, is being proposed by Carl Albrecht and UAC before we, um, deliberate and vote on what our position is going to be. So, um, I think it's, I think it's important, uh, the tourism, uh, department folks, uh, from other rural counties that are also advocating for TRT reform. It's not just Grand County, uh, Washington County, Garfield County, um, Wayne County, Huyuk County, um, Kane County, there's a lot of counties that are really pushing for TRT reform and, and, uh, uh, some of those severe counties, some of those counties are, other counties are also within Carl's district, so it's not just us. Um, so, I'd like to see us, um, get something scheduled with the travel council within the next, you know, 10 days, hopefully, to sit down and discuss what's being proposed with them and solicit feedback from them. Um, are you all interested in doing that? Okay, we could have, um, Ruth's office send out a request to the travel council board in Elaine, uh, for scheduling next week for that special meeting, and then I can provide the materials for that, um, based on what we're, you know, what we're looking at from UAC right now. It's really just going to be a, a copy of, of, uh, this legislative outline. Um, so I think that's good, and I, you know, in that regard, I want to say, just speaking for myself, that, um, this is as close to the middle as you're going to find on something like this. You know, the, the, the arguments and the concern from folks that, that are opposed to TRT reform is that the promotional budgets will shrink, the economy, economy will be hurt subsequently, and they will not recover, and they will not receive, uh, more funding. Um, and the component in what's proposed here of having a floor of 2018 levels, um, not only eliminates that argument, but establishes that the promotional budget, you know, will, uh, uh, remain pretty consistent at those well-funded 2018 levels. Chris has already produced, just from a, a request, um, kind of a forecast of how what's proposed right now on paper will affect the county budget, so that's something that we'll have in hand for this meeting with the travel council to be able to say, you know, real numbers, this is what we could expect if this was to pass. But the idea here is, is that, um, the county legislative body needs to take a formal position on, on, uh, TRT reform, and now we have something specifically to look at and understand what exactly Representative Albrecht and UAC is intending to support. So, I'm looking forward to, to getting through that, um, and, uh, hopefully, we can all get on the same page for that meeting next week, and that's all I have to report.
Jaylen?
Just a question on that topic. Chris, do you, now off the top of your head, an approximate figure of what 2018 level in dollar amounts for a promotion would have been?
Uh, $2,527,000.
Thank you.
Terry, is that specific or not? I can't remember the hundreds. So, it's not just a number?
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I attended several meetings. Um, the Planning Commission, uh, were, uh, meeting, uh, talked about another, um, HDH application, PPU subdivision. Um, they're also talking about, uh, beginning to talk about overnight accommodation standards, and, um, then, uh, Colin Fryer came in and, uh, talked about some possible amendments to the Red Cliffs Lodge PUD, um, that he would like to try and work on. Uh, attended the travel council meeting, um, and, uh, they chatted about, um, the Saturday night concert or Friday night concerts and how successful that had been, and would like to move those a little bit, uh, later, I believe, in the day so more people can attend. Then, um, uh, also, they noted that, uh, that Arches in June was down 1%, Canyonlands was flat, uh, and they had lots of visits, uh, on the website, it was up 29%, 2.5 million people. Um, and then last month, the travel council sent 17,000 people to local businesses. Uh, so, they have been active. Uh, Grand Conservation District, um, as general business as usual, uh, basically, um, talking about, uh, equipment, grant applications, and some resource updates, member of, uh, memo of understanding with, uh, NRCS, Grand County, and some other things. One thing that did come out of that meeting, which, uh, I haven't verified, but could be a game changer, and that is, it appears that San Juan County has sunk a well over in the Can Green Drainage with the idea of piping that water over into the south part of, of the valley. Um, and I haven't had a chance to check on that. I don't know how, how prolific the well is and exactly, uh, anything much more about it other than, than that it was stated that that was done. Um, so, you might want to keep our eyes and ears open on that one. Uh, Grand Water and Sewer, the Chapman Well is still down. Um, we've ordered, uh, they've ordered parts, um, and a new pump, uh, and it should be up and running if not by now, shortly. And, uh, their water projects are coming along, almost completed. Uh, Moab Mosquito District, um, as everybody knows, uh, we have, um, some serious mosquitoes hanging around that really should be eradicated, um, because they're, uh, the vector mosquitoes that carry some pretty serious, uh, diseases if they, if the mosquitoes themselves are infected with them, which they are not at this point. In any case, uh, the mosquito district has been fogging and, and trying to, uh, to eradicate the Aegeus Agypti mosquito, and, uh, the state and the CDC are both aware and sort of monitoring the situation, may or may not get involved, but- But anyway, if you have any feedback or comments about that, you know, I'm not an entomologist, but everything that I can get from attending those meetings is that it's a serious situation, it needs to be, that bug needs to be eradicated. Other than that, I think that's it.
I have a question.
All right.
I know I've received, and maybe other people, I've received a couple of phone calls and an email concerning, they're very supportive of the fogging, they understand the need to do so, but they are unhappy with the letting people know when it's going to happen in their area. And I know at one point in Moab, when certain things were happening, they had someone go around in a car and let the people know that, you know, at such and such a time, there's going to be a flood, or duh, 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 duh. I don't know, I think we should look at maybe some ways. I know they've improved it on the Health Department website, they have done it. Chris, did you have something? But anyway, I wonder if we could help get that word out.
Yeah, so, we are working on that. I think Matt set up a notification page on the county's website that people can subscribe to, and every time it gets updated, they'll be, they can either get a text message or an email. And I think above and beyond that, down, you know, hopefully soon, but not immediately, there's a phone alert system that can do an automated call to everybody in the area and leave a voicemail.
Oh, okay, cool.
Or, you know, a robo-call or whatever, informing people within the area that it's going to happen. So, those are the things we're working on.
Thank you.
To deal with that.
Thank you. Good. That's good to hear.
Thanks, Terry. Rory? All right. Well, the beginning of the month, we had a holiday, and two of my board meetings are on that day, so we, one was airport board, supposed to be the next Monday, we postponed that till this next month. The other one we had was, was weed board, and today, we called a special meeting today to try to go over our budget so we could get that turned in. That should be coming to Chris. And then, we've got two weeds that we would like to see if the county would like to put it on the, if there is a way, we can put it on the Class Four obnoxious weed list, and that is the Ravenna Grass and also the Golden Bamboo. These are two non-native plants that are not native to the United States. So, we'd like to get them in place before they start getting bought and spread around.
I wouldn't have any idea.
So, we will work on it. I will get with Ruth. So, other than that, that's all I've got.
Sweet. Thanks for that. I met with the EMS before the community meeting. The main takeaway from that was the search for an appropriate spot, and then we kind of rallied and had a quick community meeting that Curtis was mentioning, that not only involved, like, the horse traders, but some public or private landowners in trying to find a spot for an EMS shed. I met with Trail Mix, and there was, I apologize for forgetting the correct title, a proclamation from the Department of Interior that basically said to prepare for allowing e-bikes anywhere bicycles are allowed. So, that was a big shock for the non-motorized folks, and trying to figure out how to deal with that. I met with the Cemetery District, and they have their new grave-specific backhoe that they're very excited about, and the above-ground burial remain, the columbarium, thank you.
Yes.
That is all in place, it's been landscaped quite well, and we're planning a, a bit of an open house and PR event around not just the columbarium, but that we're one of the few places where you can have a green burial in the country and completely, you know, decompose in a wooden box without a vault or anything. But probably the most exciting thing to report on is, oh, and the library board met and reviewed their budget, so that should be coming along. But this weekend was the fiftieth anniversary of the Slick Rock Bike Trail, and it was an amazing event. Andrea did a wonderful job, she went above and beyond what I was expecting out of it. In the morning, there was festivities happening up at the Slick Rock, and the EMS was there, and the library had their bike, bike, book bike there, Trail Mix was there, the Sand Flat Stewardship Committee was there. Luckily, the graveyard didn't have to come, but pretty much all my committees were up at the trailhead, so that was great. And Dick Wilson, who had the vision for the trail, was there. And then in the evening, over at Star Hall, there was a world premiere of a film that they really did a good job. So, the travel council helped fund some of that, and it was just a really great day all around. And Ruth is in the film, and it's, I think the whole entire film is on YouTube already, so feel free to check that out, it was really well done. And I think that's all I have for council reports. Elected official reports?
Yeah, so, we kicked off the Budget Advisory Board, we've had a couple of meetings so far, and so, we're going to be meeting every week, Thursday mornings from nine to noon until we get it done. And again, just to kind of reiterate, if the council's interested in entertaining a property tax increase, there's a timeline for that that starts in early October, and so, keep that in mind. But we are doing our best to try to cut our expenses, which we were successful at earlier today. I'm also working on the general election, my elections officer's on leave right now, so I'm trying to figure it all out by myself, but seems to be happening, so that's good, that's all I have to report.
County attorney? I see no other elected officials.
Mine might take a little longer. Okay, you guys?
Oh, item N, County Attorney's Written Report Regarding Optional Planner Review. Christina Sloan.
Show of hands, who read it? Counsel? Oh, yeah.
I skipped it.
Chair?
I skipped it.
Oh. Okay, so I want-
I had the Cliff Notes from the Horse's Mountain.
Of course. From some interesting reporting, thanks Doug, for there at the TI. Yes, it's getting a little bit attention, I went to give you a little bit of context about why I wrote this written report. By statute, our favorite HB two-two-four, the study committee, of course, had to draft an optional plan that included transitional details as well as their recommendation for new form of government. And then the county attorney had to review that plan for consistency with the Constitution, but also state statute. There's a bunch of deadlines in there. My review, I was supposed to have forty-five days for it, and in theory, if I had found violations, and they had gotten me the recommendation prior to the date they did, then they could have revised it. But I had forty-five days by statute to do my review, they gave me twenty-three, I had to really bust my butt to get it done. I did get it done by the deadline versus just punting it and saying I couldn't get it done. But unfortunately, there, I found four violations, and there was not enough time for them to fix those violations, and therefore, the new form of government can't, you know, the ballot question cannot run in two thousand nineteen. Those four violations, I'll talk through, they both, they all have constitutional components, but the one that's getting the most attention is the redistricting issue, and that is a constitutional issue. Keep that in mind, it's not just based on statute. And so, the four issues are this redistricting issue where the study committee, by statute, the HB two-two-four says the study committee shall specify whether there are districts, okay? Doesn't even say the number, it just says whether or not there will be districts. The Constitution gives the state legislature the power to redistrict, and then under state statute, Title Seventeen, the state legislature then delegated to the county council, the county legislative body, the power to redistrict. And it's very specific, the county has the power to create districts, divide the county into districts, and change those districts as they need to. None of that language is included in HB two-two-four, all it says is that the study committee shall specify whether or not there will be districts, okay? So, I found, in my opinion, that the study committee does not have the power to redistrict the county, which they did by making the actual proposal. So, they included this Exhibit A map that shows the new districts, the new district concept is quite a good one, in my opinion. Unfortunately, they needed to include it in the recommendations segment and then assign that task to the county council. And so, that is something that you guys will need to do to facilitate the optional plan going onto the ballot. We have plenty of time to do that, so we don't have a timing issue. Not all counties have done it that way, that doesn't mean they've done it the legal way. Interestingly, Morgan County, who's the other one being mandated to do this, did it the way that I believe you have to do it under statute, which is, they assign the task of districting to their council, is not included in their optional plan. So, that's one issue. The second issue is an attempt to limit the council's ability to interfere, is actually a word that's used in statute, but I'll say oversee or direct the county manager. Of course, the study committee has recommended a county council manager form of government. There's separation powers, right? This will separate the legislative and the executive, and there's constitutional basis for that, there's statutory basis for that. But there's also state statute that says that the county manager's powers and functions are limited by ordinances that the county council can pass, and the county manager cannot veto any of those ordinances. But there is language in one of the sections of the optional plan that, in my opinion, limits that. What happened is, and I think that Gavin Anderson, the attorney for the study committee who drafted it, did a great job. That provision, he took straight out of an old optional plan of someone else's, it's from two thousand six. I think that that statute has had since changed, and he didn't realize it. There is a statute that speaks to exactly what that provision was attempting to do. It's more limited than the language used, and so, I recommended, hey, let's convert to this updated statutory language that won't infringe on the council's ability to direct the county manager under law. Third one, only the county council has the ability to name or designate the special election. And so, when you read the election code together with HB two-two-four, running the optional plan in two thousand nineteen, which is a municipal election year, is possible, but it becomes a special election for the county. Only the county council can designate that special election. The study committee did so by mandating that it run this year and by stating a date certain, they didn't need the date in there, all you need to do is remove that date. So, with each of these violations, by the way, I have made a recommendation, which under statute I'm mandated to do, and so, there's been some discussion of whether these are major or minor issues. I disagree, I think they're all major issues, they're all violations, they're all easy fixes in terms of language revisions that you can make. And then the fourth one is about removal of officers. There's actually three ways under law that you can remove elected officers in the county, that's not just you guys, it's all elected officers, and there's a constitutional method, there's, and then there's two ways under statute. One has to do with mental competence, and the other one is a judicial, your classic judicial removal process. And the language used in the optional plan allowed only that last one, it limited removal only for purposes under this judicial removal statute, which is a violation of the Constitution and that other provision of law. And the other thing I want to point out is, you know, I was requested, why can't you find a de minimis violation, and we go ahead and we run this in two thousand nineteen, and we amend the plan later? The statute doesn't allow me to do that. The statute says, you have to determine whether there are violations or law or not, and there were four violations ultimately that I found. Questions? Yes, Curtis?
So, well, I guess first off, it's unfortunate because it, I think everybody was hoping to, most people were hoping to kind of get on with this, and the timelines matched up, you know, for our election cycles, so I think I'm just, I'm disappointed that we're not, you know, moving forward with it. It's kind of, you know, head scratching, even on an enhanced timeline, because it, I mean, at this point Gavin Anderson has been dubbed this expert of county plans and form of government, he is an attorney, you know, he drafts the UAC, you know, Bible or operating manual, and it just, I'd like to hear from the committee more on a response to this, unless, has, did they respond to you? Like, did they have Gavin, his attorney, respond to you and say, you know, here's our response to your review? Because I was thinking the committee chair would be here and say, you know, this is kind of our feelings on this, and I know they have their meetings, but we don't really, we're not a part of their meetings.
Sure.
I'm wondering what the, because I've heard outside of just, you know, what the papers are reporting, there's other, there's contexts and frames of reference that, you know, in some ways, it delegitimizes some of the issues that you've found, like, you know, these five of the eight other counties that have gone through this process that have allowed their study committee, don't quote me on this, to, you know, to create the districts and, and so, in that context, it would be unfortunate if we're just looking for things to stop this thing, you know, that are relatively minor, considering Gavin Anderson is supposed to be our, this expert of this issue, and I'm wondering what his responses were.
Yeah, well, let me address two things. One, just because other people are doing it the wrong way, or just because we've always done it a certain way, that doesn't apply with me. So, I'm always going to look at something anew, and I took a lot of time with this, and I looked at it anew, and I found that under constitutional law, that the county council has the power to redistrict and the study committee does not, and under-
So, what does that process look like? Because we're not, that's, so, basically, how would they have handled that right? They would have, they would have done everything but worrying about the districting, and just, we would have worked on that and-
Exactly, they should have assigned it in their recommendations report. And they can make a proposal or not, and they made a proposal that is quite interesting, and so, they should, they should have, or they could have made the proposal, and they should have assigned the task of creating the districts to the county.
Was that Gavin, what was Gavin's response to that?
Okay, so, let me tell you a little bit more about my process. So, when I first got into it, and here just, you know, sort of some entertainment, was like my first draft going through the optional plan, and I literally just tagged every single place I thought, hi, bet that's, I need to look at that, right? So, there was probably eighteen things, I'm like, okay, I'm going to go back and I'm going to spend some time on each of those sections. Well, that was after reading HB two-two-four for the two-hundredth time, after reading the Utah Constitution, again, it'd been a while, after perusing some parts of the election code I thought would be relevant. And then, once I reviewed those further, I narrowed it down to eight things that I thought were violations, and I sent those out to Chris and Gavin in draft form, in a draft written report, to say, hey, guys, and this was about two weeks, this was only a week or so, ten days into my twenty-three days of giving. And I said, hey, this is where I am right now, obviously, there's a super draft, this isn't for dissemination to anyone, but I want to talk through these eight issues. So, we went back and forth by email, I talked with Gavin by phone. In terms of the redistricting issue, his response, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but the response that I recall is, I don't disagree with your analysis, but other counties have done it this way. I'm like, okay, but my analysis shows me that that's illegal, and so, I can't stand behind the study committee usurping that power, and that's true with these other issues as well. And then, I narrowed it down from the eight. I also, by the way, reached out to Summit County, their chief deputy county attorney, chief civil, they've gone through this process, obviously, it's been a little while, he was interested, you know, we went back and forth on some, some of the issues. Interestingly, he agreed with three of the four that I ultimately decided on, and he questioned the redistricting as well. And then I also reached out to an attorney by the name of Alan Smith, who was this constitutional guru, who's worked on the Navajo Nation redistricting case, that six-year case in San Juan County. And in the constitutional, like, wonky worlds, he's a name. So, I reached out to him to say, what do you think? So, I didn't make these decisions in a bubble, and I involved Gavin, you know, very closely from the beginning. Once I narrowed it down to the four, I sent him again, my next version of the report, and I said, I want to talk to you about it again, we got on the phone again, we talked about it for quite some time. I wasn't able to be at the meeting because that's the day my husband had surgery in Salt Lake, so I could not be at the study committee meeting. But I have talked to several people who were. I have read the reports. And, you know, Gavin, you know, my understanding is Gavin says, hey, you know, this is the interesting thing about law, that you can have attorneys disagree and--
No.
Yeah, no. So, you know, he is, you know, obviously, he wants to do a good job for his client. He's going to disagree with me with his client.
So they didn't issue any kind of, like, formal response to your review? It was just conversation? And then they met, right, since your review?
Yeah. They just met the one time, and then we are set up, and I'm going to meet with them on the 27th. Which I was willing to, that was their next regular meeting. And I said, hey, I'm happy to meet with you anytime. We'll have to do a special meeting. And they chose not to do that, to just stick with their regular meeting.
What's the goal? Is that for you both to discuss your review on the 27th?
I think to answer questions. And Gavin's already proposed language to, you know, cure the violations. I haven't looked at that yet. But again, the cure is not difficult. So it's too bad that the timing wasn't such that this all could have happened three months ago instead of right down to the last minute.
So my last question is, because they've got essentially a year now to get approval for this version of the county plan or corrected version, what is there, can the public expect for that body to potentially meet and continue to work on things? I mean, so it sounds like they put this together, delivered it to you, you, it didn't pass your review. And I'm wondering if we're anticipating them to meet and can you continue to deliberate over things outside of just these trouble areas where there's friction?
Ruth can probably talk to that better, but I would hope that they would open up their recommendation to the public because they held public hearings before they created the recommendation, but not after. But that's up to them to deal with.
Technically, those weren't public hearings, but they certainly had lots of open houses and public meetings. But yes, they do intend to continue meeting. And I think the very, the very next meeting, actually, they canceled this Friday's meeting in order to make the 27th meeting be the next meeting with the county attorney to talk through the issues and the cures, which they've already done with their attorney, ask questions and try to get an understanding and a meeting of the minds. And then they will continue to work, though, toward having a solid plan, is my understanding, for the people to vote up or down next November. Or if there's a possibility of a special earlier election, I don't know if there is or isn't.
All right, yeah.
So for 2000, anyway, 2019, November 2019, I think, is what we're talking about.
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty, excuse me. Thank you. And our clerk auditor attended that meeting as well, so he may have some input, but--
Well, and one more thing on the timing. They actually have to get their work done one year after their first meeting. So that's March 7, 2020. So, you know, we have not imposed a death sentence where they have to do this forever. They do have an end date where they will be done.
March 7, 2020. So, okay, so they need to have the next round or the next version of the county plan submitted to you by now?
It should be 120 days before.
Sorry.
But yes.
Chris, is it, so the door's closed 100% on having this question on the ballot this year?
Yes. It is closed.
Other specific--
It's not happening this year.
Bob, do you mind, just for the sake of YouTube coming? Bob Greenberg from the study committee?
Well, I can't speak for the study committee. I can give you my impression, which is that there's little appetite for opening the plan back up in general. And I suspect the study committee will move to adopt specific cures to the issues of county attorney has raised. And at least in my reading of her report, they're really pretty easily fixed. I think what caused your disappointment, Curtis, is the delay in the study committee getting started, which is caused by lawsuits, that left the study committee very little time to complete its work prior to the deadlines for the election. In fact, the only way we got a report to Chris and Chrissy and you by the deadline was by having a couple of marathon meetings, one of which involved our attorney on the telephone for a nine-hour meeting, which is not a recipe for a great outcome.
He was in person both times.
No, the second time, he was by phone. If you'll remember, he kept saying, okay, well, you print another copy, you can take a break again. So it was a mad rush at the end. And issues that would have been charitable in a timely fashion to get it on this year's ballot weren't able to be raised until after the 120-day deadline for changing the plan had passed. So it goes. But my suspicion is on Friday, we will sit down, we'll mostly be talking about the cures that both Gavin and our county attorney have tossed around and adopting such of those as we think appropriate. But the county attorney has the final word on this by statute. It's not subject to debate or arm wrestling or argument, really. The only discussion left is how we address the issues that she's found. And just as an aside, I know there's one school teacher on the council that I can totally remember when my daughter came to me in middle school with some wild proposals saying, well, all the other kids do it, Dad. And we just laughed. So that, I find that to be difficult. Thank you. Any questions?
No, Bob. No questions for you, sir. Anything else before we move on? Jaylen?
This is just a logistics-on-paper question. I'm trying to wrap my head around the two districts, which would be for county seats, but then we have voting precincts that I'm assuming would not correspond at all with the districts. So in an election year when we have county seats and state seats and presidential seats, is that a logistical nightmare for the person running the election, Chris?
So since we're moving into partisan elections, anyway, those voting precincts need to be updated to have equal amounts of active voters, you know, probably. Because I guess, I'm not really all that familiar with partisan politics, but I guess the, what do you call them?
Precincts?
But the people that represent the precincts in the--
Precinct chairs.
Anyway, the precincts are used by the parties to establish delegates for voting in their, in their primaries. And so it's important that those are somewhat equal. Since we went to mail-in voting, and we weren't partisan anyway for quite a long period of time, it didn't really matter whether those precincts were equal in terms of active voters. The state statute on the matter just says that we only have to have a limit of 150 active voters per precinct, which we currently comply with. But if we're moving into partisan elections, it needs to be amended anyway. And so however the districts get drafted and approved, a secondary operation to that would be to redraft the voting precincts so that we had as few crossing boundaries as possible. Because every time there's a boundary, a political boundary that crosses another political boundary, you have to come up with a ballot type specific to that little polygon that gets created. And we already have 27 of them. And if this were to pass without updating the voter precincts, it would be many, many, many more.
Jaylen, what was your, like, the bulk of your question? I didn't really catch that. What would be confusing? Because I'm thinking about our precinct maps right now, and that's a quagmire.
Right. And so if those same precinct maps were to stay, which is what I was assuming would happen, then it would be a nightmare to get ballots out to people who are in the two districts that the study committee formed because--
So the precinct maps, I would assume those would go away, right?
No, you still have to have them. Even though we're all mail-in and we only have, I mean, mostly they're used as polling locations for when you don't have all mail-in elections. And so you would have, each precinct would have a physical polling location in the old days. And that's where everybody, and then you would figure out a place where everybody in that precinct would go and drop their ballots off, and you'd have all your election judges there and everything. Now we only have one polling location, and that's the clerk's office. And so they don't make sense in that respect, but since the political parties use them to establish delegates and do their caucuses or whatever, then they still need to exist for that purpose. And the state still requires them to exist also. And so the problem is that the ballots have to have both the council district and the voting precinct, and then in a regular general election, the state and federal precincts also. And so every permutation of all of those things has to have its own ballot type created. And so let's say, for instance, that you drafted the circle of a council district around, you know, the center of Moab. Pretty much all of the 12 voting precincts are going to be comprised within that. And so just that one council district and just the 12 voting precincts are going to create 12 ballot types for one position in one race.
Don't we, we don't draw the precincts, the county precincts, or--
You do, yes. The council does.
So wouldn't we just go in and redraw the precincts so that they make--
Right. And we should do that--
So, I mean, we can to the extent possible, but the problem with putting one district over the top of the main population center is that it's unavoidable that you're going to split it up--
Some, yeah.
--to some degree. And, I mean, we can deal with that. It's just going to create a lot of different ballot types. But I think it can be minimized by redrafting the voting precincts to more closely align with the council districts, however they're drafted, in association with the state and federal political boundaries.
Makes sense.
But, you know, it'll be a bit of a process, but we, you know, I was thinking we were going to have to do that if it passed. In this election, we only have two months to do it. But now we have more time, and so that's good because it would, it would be, it'd probably take a while to try to figure out which arrangement creates the fewest number of ballot types.
And I did discuss the precinct issue because it also is quite clear under statute and constitution that the county legislative body drafts those precincts. There weren't new precincts created, but the old precincts were integrated, which could be upon a boat an establishment of new precincts. And I'm, they were established in at least 1992, possibly before. Chris and I aren't sure. They're not legal. There's the state statute that we're bound by with the 1,250-person limit, but there's also constitutional law that regulates how the precincts are drawn in terms of fairness and equality and votes per person and all that.
Yeah, which our current precincts can't comply with, right?
No.
Because they're just totally, they're just a boilerplate of the old school district?
Right. And so it was, right. So it's problematic that the map that was in the optional plan reintegrates our illegal precincts and also underscores why it's such an important thing that the county council needs to handle all of a sudden.
So what's our, what's our timeline and plan for getting to that? The county council getting to the precincts and the districts?
You know, well, we have this March deadline now of 2020, so we'll have the optional plan finalized by then. So that should give us plenty of time to go through this process before the election next year.
So, yeah, assuming that the amended plan still comes out with the same two seats selected by district and three at large, then the, it'll be really on the current sitting council to create those districts. And the creation of the council district and the voting precincts are related, but they're not the same thing. And so you'd have to do both. Sound fun? I mean, there is a bit of a hole in statute where nobody is really compelled to actually create these districts. And so I'm hoping that somebody does because if this passes and then the districts don't get created, then I don't know what I'm going to do.
And there's a judicial process. Chris and I talked through that. Obviously, we hope not to do that.
Yeah, but I mean, it wouldn't be done by filing time.
Why don't we put together with the county staff amendments to HB 224, this election law that cleans up all this gray area and attach that to form a government bill? There's a form of government bill every year. There's been one before HB 224 and after. Instead of complaining about, you know, the holes in it, just do something about it because there's only two counties that are, you know, that are affected by HB 224. And we can be a driving component of getting that rounded out so that there's no more arguments or complaints over the gray area.
All right. That's your job, Kurt.
We'll just do that, Kurt.
Well, I assume through, I mean, all this process, there's probably got to be a pretty clean list of what specifically needs to be cleaned up.
Well, there's quite a few--
I saw your sticky notes. Do you want to just leave that in my box?
Yeah, I'll do that. Good luck reading my handwriting now.
Okay. Oh, Chris.
Anything else from the county attorney?
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations on your Dancing With The Stars. Council administrator report.
Okay. Well, I'm back from vacation. Today's my first day after six business days gone. I want to say thank you to Bryony Hill and also Tara Collins for covering the packet in the office in my world for me while I was out. I did have to miss the Slick Rock 50th celebration, so that was the only bummer. Very good vacation.
Dancing With The Stars.
And Dancing With The Stars, which I also love. Yes. Congratulations. Let's see. I do want to take a moment and read to you an email I received from the Utah Office of the Courts. Unfortunately, it's not about the bar position for the selection committee. This is about a late application. So this is as of yesterday morning. Amy Hernandez, who I believe was here presenting with you all along with Jim Peters, says to the applicant, unfortunately, I did not receive your application before the deadline closed. This does relate to you all, so let me get to that. As such, I cannot forward your application to the nominating commission. However, the commission has not yet met. That's the people that you all have, three of whom you all have selected. They've not yet met. If you can convince the Grand County Council to allow her to reopen the position to solicit for more applications, then I can accept your application without violating judicial rule. So this was just yesterday morning. There's nothing on your agenda. And so I'm trying to just facilitate a request. I have spoken with the applicant who has a lot to say about what happened, that this was late and so forth. But I kind of was hoping to have some kind of direction as to whether it would make sense to open up to the general public another application process, a week or two, to allow for more applications or not. Our judge does leave first part of November or last day of October. I'm not sure which.
It means effective November 1.
Effective November 1. So we have six weeks, I guess. Is that right? Less than?
Well, and the nominating commission hasn't fully been seated because the regional bar has not made their choice as far as we know.
Right.
It's not been communicated. We have pushed on it. I'm not sure what's going on there. I am getting a little concerned, but at this point, they haven't, it hasn't technically been convened or not in the first--
And how would we promote that it was reopened? In the usual ways or just--
Well, so I would connect with this Amy Hernandez, and she would get it published just as she has been doing. She just needs an okay, and I didn't feel like I was empowered to provide that okay.
No. She wants to be on the committee to--
No, no, no. To open up, to repost the job posting for the justice court judge.
Oh, for her to apply for--
No, no, no.
Not for the committee, for the actual judge position.
There's someone who missed the deadline.
Apply for the judge position. Okay, that's what I was--
Well, and you want to talk? I know a little bit about the situation. He was told he would have time and then never was notified of the extension. Do you want to--
Counsel, my name is Stephen Byers.
Either this or citizenship.
Attorney work's been thrown around a little bit loosely, and I am a member of the bar. I submitted my application late. It was after-- I submitted my application late in the post after I'm on it. Justice Tows, the current sitting judge.
You need to speak into the microphone.
Justice Tows, the sitting judge right now, made me aware of this position well over a year ago, and suggested that I should apply for it. So I reached out to many places to when I would receive notice for the opening. And as Ms. Sloan would know, we rely on email and notices through the Utah courts throughout all judicial district court judges are forwarded to you for the openings. And my assumption there, my ignorance, I kept on waiting for this notice to be arrived. And I've been waiting for it for quite some time. And then another fellow attorney had mentioned, it says, well, good luck on the application process. And I says, well, what? I says, it is open now? And she said, no, it is closed. And then I was frantic at that point. So I do understand that there are applicants in who did receive notice, and it was in the paper, but I diligently really did watch that email every day for the notice to be given. I'd had my application prepared, most of it, for generally at least eight months and ready to submit it. When I received notice that it was closed, I, right off the bat, I tried to touch base with the judicial court system, Utah court system, and they just happened to be on conference that week, so I could not contact anybody. Ms. Hernandez did contact me yesterday and let me aware of the possibility to open without you did, with the solicit and open some applications for a short amount of time. She did mention there was one other applicant was possibly wanting to apply also. When I received notice on a Wednesday of the, of the closing, on Thursday, I reached out to several people and had not received any, any type of communications, of course, what was going on, because everybody was at the conference. So I went ahead and submitted my application anyway, and you're also supposed to send it by certified mail and receipt. So I did that on Friday and Saturday. So within the timeframe of where I received the notice, I submitted my application the next day and got it, the hard copy in the mail. I do understand that the other applicants did receive notice. I don't know if Ms. Sloan has any input on it for knowledge of how we received notice on our emails.
Would we require an action from the council to reopen that?
This is according to her, yes.
Well, I think citizens would benefit from the largest applicant pool that we could muster up, so could we get that as a future agenda? Is it?
To ratify it? Can we ratify it? If we do it, we need to do it now, because they need to meet and get on with it, we only have six weeks.
Is, is there a way that we can?
What if we just spin policy to put on it?
Or can we?
It's the open meeting's act.
We've got a special meeting potentially next week, is that something we could add to that agenda?
Yeah.
Can we, we've done it in the past where we give a head nod and say, yes, let's move forward to this, and then we put it on our next agenda as ratifying. Is that a possibility?
That's, that's usually reserved for things that are expected to be unanimous, with, and this is more maybe a debatable situation. I don't think a head nod is necessarily the right approach, but there's nothing in writing, that's just my two cents.
I mean.
But I think an agenda item next week at a special meeting could, could work.
That delays it, though.
Does that work in the timeline, or?
I mean, could we do a head nod and see if anybody's opposed to ratifying at the next meeting?
Do we know how many?
Or have it verbalized?
Are filed before the deadline?
Yes, we had five applications.
And there might be?
On time.
More than one other that are interested, you know?
That's the first I've heard of that. But I don't, other than the timing, I don't see a negative to opening it, because there aren't a lot of applicants. I did know of Stephen Byers' interest before.
How could, I don't understand how we could do that without having it posted on our agenda right now, Chris?
Yeah, let's.
No, I think we got to do it, and then we'll have to revisit the time issues then, because maybe the committee would have convened the first meeting, I don't know, so.
That would only, that would only set it back a week, right?
Well, if we had a, if we had a meeting, if there were only one thing on the agenda, we only need 24-hour notice, why couldn't we have a special meeting this week, if we could make sure four people were there?
Now, that's pushing.
Well, we've done it before.
And in terms of timing, just to understand.
And that was pushing it.
You would be, you would love to reopen it, but you would need to reopen the period for some amount of time, hopefully the shortest amount of time possible, so a week or less, so that they can, because they should not meet before the period is closed, so, you know, that's the issue, is the timing's a real concern at this point, but.
All right, let's get it on an agenda item for next week, and we'll.
Revisit.
Yeah, but we can get the word out that the council's entertaining it, or whatever. It will be voted upon, so that if there's other folks that miss the deadline, they get the heads up that it might be open.
Right, got it.
Judges don't Facebook or something, there's not like the? All right.
I appreciate this opportunity, I know it doesn't guarantee me a job like your names, I just appreciate the offer.
Well, thank you for your willingness to serve our community.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay.
Well, we're just calling an emergency.
Rory, I would like to make a motion that we move presentations up to, to right now and move department heads down. Motion to address item P next, presentations made by Rory Paxman. Seconded by Greg Calley, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next up is presentations, item P, presentation of retirement plaque to Jeff Whitney, Chief Building Official, County Flood Plane Administrator, Ruth Dillon.
I don't know, I think we should have made him wait.
Yeah, yeah. We'd like to move this to item D.
He was whirling the way over there, couldn't you see that?
All right, join me up here, let's see, let's get in front of the mic. All right, so let's, let's trade sides of it. All right, this is, everyone knows Jeff Whitney. I first met Jeff when I moved here and noticed him walking, and I wanted to tag along with him, and he didn't know me from Adam, other than that I was a new employee, and he was willing to let me. And then I didn't follow through. But isn't that kind of amazing? And so I didn't know that he had done it for years, and he still does it, and it's every single day, and I had no idea. But this is Jeff, we see him walking all the time. I want to say a few words, just a little bit about his department and about how he has led his department. So first of all, it's 30 years this year, isn't it? You've already had 30 years.
Right, in March.
In March, he, he had his 30 years with Grand County, which is pretty, pretty phenomenal. So I've actually only known Jeff a little over a third of that time, and been his supervisor going on seven years. So that's not much compared to his time with the county. A few things, though, I want to say, he's, he's had a goal for a long time to be the most certified building department per capita in Southern Utah. Did you meet that goal? Yes, I did. He also has a goal, has had for a long time to be a one-stop shop for construction information in Southern Utah. So that's for architects and contractors and all kinds of emphasis on professional development for his staff as well. And I would say, well, you tell us, did you meet that goal, to be this one-stop shop? Yes, I did. No, good. Jeff is very much a team player, all of our departments have worked with him, he was very helpful on the cinema court fire, for example. Some of the committees that he's served on just here in the county, along with lots of other staff, but he is always ready to step up. The Special Events Coordinating Committee, Development Review Team, Community Action Team for Code Enforcement, the GIS Technical Committee and Policy Committee, the Performance Review Committee this year, various selection committees for bid award contract work, such as the airport terminal expansion, the jail remodel, right? You run that one too, don't you? Okay, yeah. And there's many more that I'm not thinking of. Also, a few years ago, when we did work on the capital facilities plan, he was on networking group. He's, anytime we've needed a windshield tour, such as for new council administrators or new department heads, he's always been willing to just step up and be one of the ones to show off the county and talk about the realities of working here in our county. Let's see, what else can I say? I want to quote him on a few things. He has, and done his work so diligently, he says, we must be concerned with footing, foundation, structural frame, insulation, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, exterior grading, exterior cladding, roofing, fire resistance, fire suppression systems, ADA accessibility and finish of every building. And he, he just has been so true to this. I mean, if you know him, you know that he's, he's black and white with it, which is a good thing. He's very much a leader in his department and has his staff do the same, like really follow the code. The state code changes every three years. He's also very involved with international code. In fact, I want to move in to talk a little bit about his, the achievements that I'm aware of. Let's see, he, I'm going to get these not in any particular order, but, let's see, he was awarded in 2010 the Jess M. Miller Award by the Utah Chapter of International Code Council, ICC, and this is a once-in-a-lifetime award for outstanding contributions to the building and safety field. He, in 2004, was the president of that Utah Chapter of ICC. From 1996 to 2005, he served on the Board of Directors and the Executive Committee of ICC, is that right? International Code Council. Let's see, he's got all kinds of certifications, continuing ed instructor, where he is one of the teachers here with our contractors. He's made a whole lot of things happen, really, really well done for our local contractors. He is a certified building official, a certified accessibility inspector, a certified plan reviewer, and with the certified flood plane management, he is, has that certification through the Association of State Flood Plane Managers. He actually holds, last I heard, 14 certifications, but I'm probably low on that number. 15, 15, okay. Well, so more recently, he was appointed as a four-year member of the Professional Engineers and Professional Land Surveyors Licensing Board of the State. That was a couple of years ago, that's a four-year commitment. And it was an appointment made by the Executive Director of the Utah Department of Commerce, and it had concurrence of Governor Herbert's endorsement. He is, since 2014, a lifetime honorary member of the International Code Council by that board, and that's an 18-member board from members all over the world, in an honor recognizing his contributions to that organization over the years. So this is our opportunity with this plaque to just acknowledge what little I know about him and say thank you to him. This says, presented to Jeff Whitney in recognition for 30 years of exceptional service to Grand County Building Department, 1989 to 2005. Thank you.
I'm leaving you with the best team in the world. These guys, very certified, very knowledgeable, and your construction community in this town appreciates them the way they are. Too bad for the city.
Jeff, is this a real retirement, or are you going to do shows in Vegas for a couple years?
What we're thinking about, I am in Vegas, so.
Hey, I just want to say thank you, Jeff. You know, it's been fun working with you outside. I remember you when I was a kid, I was eight years old when my dad started first building out at the river, and I remember you coming out, and I thought, man, someday I want to look up to that guy. I want to be just like him, I want to be as tall as him, yeah. Look at him. Hey, thanks, Jeff.
And Jeff does have a quick department report to give, if that's the next to Jeff item.
That is, that's right where we are. Item O, department reports.
Kind of in conjunction with the way we tried to be with our department stepping outside the standard. Cole Flower from our department, he's kidding, has been elected to the Emerging Leaders Membership Council with the International Codes Council, that's a national organization, and in August, he was featured in Building Safety Journal in an article about him, so that's posted on the county website. There, we're pretty proud of him and how it works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah. It's a tough act to follow, but our next department report is from Steve Swift with the Old Spanish Trail Arena Recreation Complex, 2018 report.
I think Jeff Whitney inspected my place with a roof on it. I was worried he was going to fall off, but he didn't. This report is, I'm going to follow through on the header sheet that I've given you, and I've labeled every page at the top if it's portrait, and at the bottom, left-hand corner if it's landscape. So the first one is record of the events of the year. We've changed this, how we measure this a little bit. What we've done is measured everything that is an event and that we have to do work for, we do prep for. So I don't know how accurate the 2016, 2017, but I know that we've exceeded our events this year, or 2018, 174. The other two columns in the graph there just show that we're catching up on 2019. We've got three months to go, and we should exceed that 174. On the next page, which is document 1B, and there's four pages attached to that, I think, and that gives a detailed list of each activity that we're measuring. And on the last page of that, which is page number four, it gives a little breakdown at the bottom of the page. So I don't propose to go through those, but it's something that you can look through if you're interested to just see how we, what we're doing out there. On document 2A, that is a collection of revenue over the last three years. You can see it's steadily gone up. And our current year, 2019, is just behind last year's total, and we've still got three months to go, so we should have an increase this year. On document 3A, this is the landscape, that's what we estimate to be a total benefit to the community in bringing events into Moab. We think we've got somewhere around $17 million to the community. And it's hard to nail that down to exact figures, but it's got to be somewhere around there. I'll skip over a few pages there. The amount of projects that we've done is not in total here, but as you've remembered from last year, we stabilized a barn. This picture of barn F is the last one to be stabilized. We've just, we finished that probably in the snow of around Christmas 2018. And now we're using those barns, it's filled in properly, and it's a little bit more work in tidying up, but it's complete. We'll move on to the next one, is the downpipes on the east side of the arena, we're emptying it out onto the steer run, was causing some damage to the walls with the water flowing onto them, and also the concrete. So we poured some holes, or, yeah, pressure washed some holes under the slab, and then slid pipes under, cut a hole in the bottom of the, on the concrete walkway or steer run, and then threaded pipe through and connected it to the downpipes. And then we took a pipe alongside the steer run and threaded out into sort of French drain area until we can connect into draining, drainage system that we have proposed for the site. You turn over the next page, it's a, there's a completed item, bars and protection that we need to put on, the, to protect the downpipe from steers. The main reason we did that was the damage to the blockwork that. The main reason we did that was the damage to the blockwork that, as the snow dripped down and soaked the walls, it was starting to crack things, the blocks and slab. It was causing a little bit of trouble. And then it was also soaking the pens at the east end of the, or the east side of the arena. And this will enable them to stay reasonably dry so that horses are comfortable in there and the owners are more comfortable in having their stalls, the horses in a decent pen, which is reasonably dry and not muddy. So that falls in line to increase our revenue a little bit because the people enjoy the facility a bit more. The next picture, it's Document 4CI, just shows that we've tidied up the arena during the cold weather and wet weather over the Christmas period. My assistant managed the arena while I was on leave, and he actually put an epoxy coating over the floors. It looked pretty awful before that, and I was embarrassed to even rent it out. So we've upgraded that a little bit and made it good, done some work to the ceiling, just tidying it up. We put LED lights in there in the form of tubes, and so it runs a little bit cheaper. And that's just another little nice thing we did. Document 4DI, it shows the five bay garage up at the airport that we relocated from there, thanks to Judd. He suggested he'd like it moved in a hurry, and we thought we could use it in a hurry. So we got together and pulled it out of there and then awarded a contract to have it erected on the arena site, which is on the next page, shows it in position. We, in conjunction with the drainage on the east side of the arena, we put heat tape down the downpipes to stop them freezing. That has helped us get the water away from the building and off to drainage. I haven't got a picture of that because you really don't want to see inside the drain With, Document 4FI, shows a big hole full of water. Our new six-inch line to, from Kinsley to the Borfields burst on us, and we had to get it, get it dry, so we scooped it all out and repaired it. And there's a sort of partial picture on the next page showing some of the repair. And we, on the top of this pipe, we mounted a pressure-reducing valve that took some of the shock away, I don't know if that's the correct term for it, but takes some shock away from the water moving up and down the pipe. So also, there's no, on Item G, there's no pictures for that, but we've basically done 90% of the arena internally with LED lights to reduce the utility costs. We're always concerned about the amount of money it costs to run the place, so we're trying to reduce it where possible. On the next page, for HI, this is a lower female bathroom, and in an effort to satisfy our customers a little bit better, we tidied it up. It looked a bit drab in there, it was dark. We added a new LED tube to the, or tube light to the ceiling, just so people see inside, when they're inside the cubicles. Pretty important that. And we put new paper towel dispensers up and soap dispensers, garbage cans, even a shelf there for women to do their hair on if they needed to. They come into the arena at night pretty frazzled after a long drive with horses, and they rent the stalls and then take the opportunity to clean up a bit. And we also upgraded the male toilet a little bit. So in both of the, or in the bathroom, should I say, we put sensors on the lights so that they wouldn't be left on all weekend, and sensors on the fans so that they would come on with motion and also sound. So it's tidied up and doing very nicely now for us. We also put shower doors on the, there was a lot of water draining out of the showers if people weren't careful and created a slip hazard on the floor. So we shut, put shower doors on and just made it a more pleasant place. We, that sort of concludes the picture side of it, but just a quick overview of the maintenance we did. It's a little bit repetitive here. We painted some areas of the lobby at the arena. This is all done in-house, too. We painted the concession walls, the bathroom walls downstairs and upstairs. All interior doors were painted. We installed, we told you about the paper towel dispensers and soap dispensers. They were all free by the local supplier of the paper that we use. So we buy their paper and they gave us those free. I don't know how that works out over a period of time, but they replace them if they get damaged, so it sounds a fair deal. And there's probably a lot of other little things we did, but rest assured, we've been very busy, and the place is increasing in popularity, and we're pleased with what we've done. I'm pleased with the staff that put in a lot of effort. And that's about it. Are there any questions on anything?
We appreciate all that for your putting in out there.
Yes, thank you.
Keeping it going.
Thank you.
Good job.
We have one other department report from Zachariah.
Okay, this is a three-part report. First, some of you may know that the BLM, well, the Department of Interior announced a directive to DOI departments to come up with rules that would effectively create new opportunities for e-bikes to be utilized on DOI-managed lands. Those DOI departments were given 14 days to come up with those new rules. In that period of time, it's really been no man's land in terms of how e-bikes are being used or regulated on those DOI lands. Historically, BLM non-motorized trails were prohibited to, well, e-bike use on those trails were prohibited. So this has created a lot of confusion within the user community, and while we have been anxiously awaiting a report from the BLM in particular, which is where most of our non-motorized trails exist, we have not yet received that. So I'm here primarily just to let you know that my office is keeping a close eye on this. Matty Logowitz and Tyson Swayze, our Active Transportation Trails staff, will give you a report as soon as they know more. They are definitely the ones that are closest to the issue, and so that report is, is hopefully going to come soon and will help us clarify what the rules actually are on the landscape. Secondly, I wanted to follow up on the email that I had sent out notifying you that our office and the county has been awarded an achievement award from the American Planning Association. This is their highest award, and it was granted to us for the high-density housing overlay and the efforts that led to that. So I sent out an email about that, and it is the second time we've received this award in two years, which is a pretty good mark of approval, at least from the state and the region, and in terms of the planning and development of local government arena. So good on you. And then lastly, and sadly, I am here to honor one person who was, who is at their last council meeting as a county staff person. So as was hinted at before, Caitlin Myers, our Community and Economic Development Specialist, has accepted a position with the City of Moab and will be moving over there after next week. And so this is her last county council meeting as a county employee. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the incredible contributions that Caitlin has made to our department and to the county. And for instance, the award that I just spoke of, she contributed to greatly. So I'm going to ask Caitlin to stand up. She's standing already. And thank you very much, and I'm glad to be keeping you in the community. We will all benefit from your contributions for years to come, but thank you on a personal note for the contributions to our office.
Sad to see you go.
You'll be missed.
Thank you. Next up is agency reports. See and none. We'll move on to citizens be heard. This is the portion of the meeting for citizens to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak on an agenda item, fill out a card and pass it up, but if you have an item that's not on the agenda, please come forward and introduce yourself and...
I'm Charlotte Mates. I'm from Grand County for 24 years, and I wanted to just speak to the transportation issue regarding the letter of intent. First of all, I'd like to thank Ruth and her staff, Bryony and Tara, for all of their hard work in communicating this last week. And we got a notification from Jade Powell, who is our transportation transit representative from the Southeastern Utah League of Governments. We've been working on these issues for over 20 years and probably before that as well. Jade has taken over for Michael Bryant as our representative, and he's been very helpful in alerting us as to potential funds that are available. In following through with all of this, from his email, just letting us know that the 1st of October is a deadline to get in the letter of intent, I spent quite a bit of time going back and forth between Judd's office and UDOT and all of those folks to just kind of understand better where we were with it. Basically, back on August the 14th, and Ruth, correct me if you hear anything differently, okay, because I know you were at that meeting. Judd, let us know that there would be funds available.
Jade.
Jade, I'm sorry, Jade. That there would be funds available for us to put in for a letter of intent. At that time, it was agreed that Verlene Strublin would take that lead. She is the director of the Grand County Grand Center, and she is putting in for the mobility, it would be Section 5310, the enhanced mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities. She does not need to have a letter of intent, is the way it reads, but she is putting in whatever needs to happen in order for her, us to apply for those particular funds. There were two other sections, 5311, which was a formula grants for rural areas, and 5339, which was for bus and bus facilities. As, I'm not familiar with what happens with any of, any of those dynamics, although, as I mentioned, we did have a meeting, and we had Elaine Geisler, Verlene, Ruth, myself, Jade, and is there anyone else there, Ruth, that you can recall?
Yeah, I don't.
It's okay. You go to a lot of meetings, I know, and we do appreciate all of your input on all of it. Basically, I'm just going to ask for your support in any transportation issues. I get a little frustrated with it. I came to Moab from having worked for UDOT for five years and hired the engineers statewide, but when I wanted to move down to Moab, they declined my request to move my job. So anyway, basically, just to make a long story short, what I, which I don't do very well, I'd like to just propose that the county council and the city council work together as best as possible, perhaps have call on UDOT and the Southeastern Utah League of Governments possibly present at one of your meetings to get as much information for as many of the transportation dollars as we can possibly have, because I believe in past years, it's come before the councils, and the main requirement is to get matching or 20% funds from the CIB or Community Impact Board funding. Does anybody have any different knowledge or information? I just, my, my personal take is that I'm kind of getting old, and like many people, if you don't have, own a car, or you can, you lose your license for, because your eyesight goes, or whatever, my personal philosophy is that throughout America, we are America, and we should be able to have a link-on transportation system. And we don't have any of that in Grand County or in most of southeastern Utah. So I'm calling it a link-on communications. And basically, if I had to get off of a shuttle bus and, that would maybe take me from Moab to Green River and get onto a train and go like to Salt Lake City and then take public transportation around there, I'd be happy as a clam. But right now, other than calling KZMU Ride Board or getting on a Purple Bench and asking for a ride, there isn't much that happens. So I'm just pleading with you to please address this as a pending issue that we could all benefit from. So thank you all for your time, and I really, really appreciate everything our county council does to help in our community, because there's many issues and we're growing quickly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the comments and your efforts in the project.
Oh, just so you can remember, today is September 17, so it's halfway to March 17.
Okay.
I got mine.
Oh, oh. The practice St. Patty's Day parade. Okay. I was like, I thought we had October 1st. What's March? Okay. All right. This, seeing no other citizens be heard, we'll move on to general business action items. Next up is Item Q, approving proposed facility improvements at the Solid Waste District Administrative Office and Community Recycling Center. Evan Tyrell, Tyrell?
Tyrell.
Tyrell, sorry.
Tyrell, no, that's quite all right. I'm quite used to it, actually. It's not a big deal.
It's that weird vowel, the Y. It's like, what do you do with it?
Sometimes it's a consonant.
Two Rs, just two Rs. It's a... So this item is, is basically, we're looking to replace our administrative office building at the Solid Waste District.
It looks great. I love it.
Is that right?
Yes.
I can just not speak if the council are ready to, to make an action on this.
I didn't want to cut you off, but...
Heaven is. Go ahead, Mary.
I move to approve the placement of two modular units donated from the Grand County School District to Solid Waste Special Service District Number One for the purpose of serving as an upgraded administrative office for the Solid Waste Special Service District Number One and to recycling and reuse storage location at the Community Recycle Center and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Rory Paxman. Discussion? It was an excellent agenda summary, very thorough and very enlightening.
And the presentation and our presentation was excellent.
The pictures speak louder than... All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes in name of slate. Thank you. It was a pleasure to have you tonight. I actually used to work in one of those trailers at the middle school, so... Next up is Item R, approving 2020 insurance rate increase. Renee Baker.
Life's not as fun as it seems. I don't think it's going to go as fast. All right, today I have the 2020 insurance renewal rates for medical insurance, dental vision, life, and long-term disability. Looks like our benefit brokers were able to negotiate it down for us a little bit. I'm going to talk about me going out to bid this year. I talked about me going out to bid this year, and that's when Cigna gave us the 16.5. Since then, and our insurance brokers, talked to them, got that down to the 7% on the medical insurance. That's kind of our biggest cost right there. Dental is a 3% increase. Vision is a rate guarantee through the end of 2020, so there's no increase there. I believe... Basic life and accidental death with dismemberment from Lincoln is an 11.8% increase, and long-term disability is at the 6.6% increase. Overall, from last year, we looked at a 9.5% increase on the medical insurance, so the 7% is a pretty good rate so far. If we do decide to go out to bid today, then that 7% will get pulled from the table and probably go back up to the 16 from Cigna.
Question?
Mary?
I move to approve the proposed 2020 insurance rates increases and authorize the Chair to sign all associated documents.
Second. Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Terry Morse. Discussion.
Yes, we got to do it.
Yes. I know part of it. We're going to get around an increase if we decide to go with any other company, so...
When was the last time we went out to bid?
About three, six years. Since we switched carriers.
I wouldn't recommend it this time around. 7% is about as good as we're going to get. And so if we went out to bid, we'd be definitely taking our chances that the bids would come back in over that amount, for sure. And so there's not any particular reason to switch health insurance carriers this year. And so you just kind of keep an eye on what the negotiations... We have a broker that works on these issues for us. And so I think they did a pretty good job, and it wouldn't be worth it to go out to bid or to change carriers when we've got such a reasonable renewal rate before us.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure it was very fun working on that. We appreciate you. Next up is Item S, approving proposed grant agreement with the FAA for, one, airport construction on taxiway A in the amount of $4,750,000. Item two, construction of terminal apron in the estimated amount of $4,550,000 at Canyonlands Airport. Judd Hill?
Okay. Little more complicated than it needs to be, but it's federal money, so... Earlier this year, new money came available, one-time funds. I put together two grants and got one of them, got the 4.75 million for the first part of the project. We didn't get the supplemental money, but we are getting a grant funded through discretionary funds, how we've gotten federal money in the past. As you can see, this says to approve one grant, and there's one grant in your packet, the other is for an estimated. Federal government's on the fiscal year, ending at the end of this month, and time is of the essence. The overall project has been discussed here in the past. At a previous meeting, we did pending federal approval, getting this money to award the contract with Armstrong Consultants, as well as the notice to proceed. LeGrand Johnson was the low bidder on the project construction, just under $9 million of construction work. The catch is, this has to be signed, sealed, and delivered by Wednesday. We got it on Friday, Thursday, I think, or Thursday. We got it last week, this grant. The next one needs to be signed, sealed, and delivered on Wednesday, and we haven't gotten it yet. They said they hope to get it to us by Wednesday or Thursday. So that's why it's being presented as this, as an estimated amount. Because it hasn't been explicitly awarded, we don't know the exact amount. That's why it's estimated at the 4.55 million. It won't be less than that. It'll be all the money for the existing contracts in the low bids that have been established. And we really can't do any of the project without getting both of the separate grants. So really, accepting the one that we know is 4.75, we can't do any of the work without getting the other grant coming through. So for this, we're economically distressed, so FAA is paying 95% of the bill for this work. The remaining 5%, $250,000 was budgeted this year, and then we recently got a CIB loan for the remaining matched funds. And that's where we're at.
Any questions, comments? Jaylen?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve the proposed grant agreements with FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, for, one, airport construction on taxiway A in the amount of $4,750,000. Two, construction of terminal apron in the estimated amount of $4,550,000 at Canyonlands Field Airport, and authorize the Chair to sign all associated documents.
Mary? Motion made by Jaylen Hawkes, seconded by Mary McGann. Discussion. Well, I always like when somebody's willing to chip in 95% of the cost, and I went up there and took a healthy tongue lashing to get the other bid, so I'd like to see us use it. And I'm appreciative that the loan payment is due to be paid off by airport funds from the parking. So I like it.
Just as a reference word, since March, we've collected just under $14,000, and our annual payment, I think, would be, what did we figure out, like 10, something like that? So...
I gave you an extra dollar on mine yesterday. Ooh!
What a guy.
That's awesome. Moved it all over the...
Any further discussion? We're almost there. We got an extra dollar. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Judd.
I will probably be reaching out to you tomorrow morning to get those signatures, both you and Christina.
Great.
And then the others will be consent, agenda, security consent signature on the second grant. Hopefully, we'll have those this week.
It'll be unavailable until lunchtime, so if we need to get the Vice Chair, if it's that time-sensitive...
I just have to have a scanned copy to them tomorrow.
Okay. Great.
And then I'll FedEx the hard copy.
Hey, Jen, have you been working with Zion's on closing that loan?
Just not since the most recent emails that you and I had.
All right. So we did kick it out to, I think, October 15th meeting. Just touch base with him, because he hasn't really let me know what we need to do, so...
Yeah, and that's with regards to the previous deals knowledge. It's the CIB loan. Because of this delay on the FAA funding, the construction's being pushed back till the spring. So we originally had gone up and tried to get the money so we could do construction starting this fall. It's just the federal money has come so late that it's not practical to start a construction project at this date.
So, but a point I'll make is, we originally applied for a lease revenue bond, which is essentially requires the title to the improvements be transferred as security, but we were able to shift that over to what's called a sales tax excise bond. And so we're, our security is actually sales tax, so don't say that we're using parking to pay for it.
Oh, I was just being hypothetical.
That's just additional rev.
Scratch that out.
Not on the record, anyway. Because the security for the loan is sales tax.
Oh, right. It's the shell game. But duly noted.
Thank you.
Next up is Item T, adopting proposal ordinance approving the Heinz Rezone from large lot residential to small lot residential located at 2550 Spanish Valley Drive. Zachariah.
Okay, so as is customary, the Council holds a public hearing and then votes on that matter at the next regular council meeting. So the public hearing for this rezone occurred at the last regular council meeting. Written comments were accepted a week later, until a week later, and I get an opportunity to vote.
Jaylen?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance approving the Heinz Rezone from large lot residential to small lot residential located at 2550 Spanish Valley Drive and authorize the Chair to sign all associated documents.
Second. Motion made by Jaylen Hawkes, seconded by Curtis Wells. Discussion. Mary?
I very much support doing this, although I do think it opens us up a little bit to some political issues, because changing a zone for one person, even if we, you know, all of us totally trust that the motivation behind the rezone is authentic and that what they're going to do is true, it's still sets a precedence for someone else to come and ask us to do the same thing. So although I'm going to approve this and excited to vote in favor, I also have some hesitation in my decision to do so.
Well, I, you know, it's hard. Not all of this stuff is black and white.
It isn't.
And, you know, every situation is somewhat unique. I see this as a case of, you know, some local folks that want to split up some of their property to provide some upward mobility for their kid, and I don't see why Grand County should get in the way of that. And so, you know, while it may not fit cleanly within the lines of the policies, it's certainly allowed for, and I support it, and I encourage the Council to support it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to one with clapper in opposition. Next up is Item U, adopting proposed ordinance approving the Namaste Rock Rezone from Range and Grazing to Highway Commercial located at 13714 North Highway 191. Zachariah.
So same process here. Public hearing was held at the last regular council meeting. This is also a rezone request, in this case from Range Grazing to Highway Commercial. The county has received several written public comments. There were several oral comments provided at the last public hearing, virtually all in opposition. Applicant, or the applicant's brother, did submit a comment, obviously in favor of the rezone. So if you have any questions, I have to answer them, or else this is your opportunity to
Is there a motion to be made? Going once? Going twice? I would just say that I think that that area has a lot of potential, and I'd like to see an overall plan kind of in place before we start spot zone changes. So I appreciate their work, and I hope that they're able to stick by us as we continue to plan for the hinterregions or the north end. But seeing no motion, we'll move along. Next up is Item V, adopting proposed ordinance approving the Buzzard Belly Rezone from Range and Grazing to Neighborhood Commercial located at 73 South Cisco Boat Ramp Road in Cisco. Zachariah.
Again, same process. Rezone request, public hearing was held at the last regular meeting. Today's your opportunity to vote. This is a rezone request to enable the new owners of this property to reopen the Cisco store under a new name called the Buzzard Belly. The only way they can do that is the county rezones the property, and that would enable them to get a business license for the retail location in the year.
Greg?
Dr. Nick Motion. Move to adopt the proposed ordinance approving the Buzzard Belly Rezone of 73 South Cisco Boat Ramp Road from Range Grazing to Neighborhood Commercial. Authorize the Chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Greg Holiday, seconded by Terry Morse. Discussion. I am much more comfortable converting half an acre to commercial than 24 acres on 191. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up is Item W, adopting proposed ordinance approving application of Murphy Flats High Density Housing Overlay District 15 to 1187 and 1189 Murphy Lane. Zachariah.
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, once again, same process.
I feel your pain.
In this case, the process is very similar to a rezone, even though it's not a rezone request. This is a request for the county to apply the high-density housing overlay, District 15 in particular, to the parcels at 1187 and 1189 Murphy Lane. And with high-density housing overlays, unlike rezones, you have in front of you a master plan that would get recorded alongside the ordinance that would apply the overlay to these parcels, as well as a development agreement that will get recorded at the time of final plat approval. The master plan would guide the development, so that means that any preliminary plat and final plat application would need to substantially conform to what is shown in the master plan. And the development agreement is a voluntary agreement on the part of the applicant and voter slash developer committing to the requirements of Section 4.7, high-density housing overlay. Essentially, that would commit them to de-restrictive 80% of the units created as housing for people household to live and work in Grand County or who meet the active employment requirements otherwise set forth in Section 4.7. I wanted to highlight the fact that at the last meeting when this public health hearing was held, I did note that we were further exploring the access easements in my conversations with the county attorney. We feel comfortable recommending approval still. That was our original recommendation. These are the recommendation now for approval of the overlay with those access easements as they are. And then I will also note that while there's no guarantee that this would eventually be approved, the applicant has put in a purchase offer on the parcel closer to the highway and has submitted a high-density housing overlay application for that parcel, I'm sorry, to the highways to Murphy Lane. And if that one is granted and this one is granted, then they would do it as one combined project. So I don't want you to vote tonight, you know, with that, you know, too much on your mind, but just to give you some context that this could also support a larger more holistic project. And staff is likely to support that one as well.
Mary?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance approving application of the high-density housing overlay District 15, HDHO-15, to the 1,187 and 1,189 Murphy Lane, Murphy Flats, HDHO Development, and authorize the Chair to sign all associated documents.
Second. Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Curtis Wells. Discussion. Terry?
I've got a question for Zachariah. If we approve the high-density overlay with the general plan that they've submitted, are we... Is that the end of the conversation about some of the questions that I particularly have concerning the parking and densities and things like that?
So it would be, it would authorize the applicant to develop, according to the master plan, primarily with respect to unit count density, in general layoff of the site. It's not a final approval of the parking. They are requesting a parking exception, and so I encourage you to make a determination on that now for the sake of clarity, but I don't think that you are legally required Staff's recommendation is to approve the parking exception request. It's only a reduction below the requirements by two spaces, but again, you know, given the justifications provided by the applicant, I think that the time is nigh to give developers the opportunity to... the opportunity to, you know, shift the paradigm in terms of reducing out of dependent travel in this community.
Is there a way that, it might not be present now, but in the future, would it be easy to count other vehicle parking towards the parking requirement?
Give me a...
Designated bicycle parking? Could that count towards your biking, your parking requirement?
I think that the county could definitely incorporate, you know, more specific standards for, for parking reduction, and that would be a very obvious component.
The only problem I see with that is if somebody comes in to build a hotel, they could say that everybody's going to bring their bikes and...
Great, no cars allowed.
There you go. All right.
And just remember, you know, an exception is not a requirement, right?
Sure.
You wouldn't be required to grant those exceptions, but they would be, you know, a possibility.
We're going to have flying Uber before we get this on the books anyway. Chris?
So Zachariah, I see the development agreement in the packet, and is the master plan the maps that are in here? Where's the master plan in the packet?
I don't have the packet up in front of me, but it's the...
Well, one thing I, one thing that I do think I need is that the motion be, a substitute motion be made to approve the ordinance, the master plan, and the development agreement.
I thought that's what I wrote, but...
No, it's, the motion was just to approve the ordinance, but there's two other agreements that need to be approved also, and so that needs to be in the motion. I'm just looking for the master plan. I see the development agreement's been signed and notarized by the applicant. I'm just looking for the...
It's the...
Master plan.
It's the site plan dated 6/21. Got 800 on the bottom right.
So the site plan is the master plan.
We can have it retitled if that is needed.
Probably should, because the ordinance was drafted pointing to the master plan.
And that would be...
And in the exhibit, it's labeled as the master plan. Is that okay if, so basically, a substitute motion would be the same except adding to the approval of the ordinance?
The master plan?
The development agreement and the ma, the re, the master plan, the retitled master plan, and I think that'll be fine. So it'd be, move to adopt a proposed ordinance, master, retitled master plan and development agreement, approving application of the High Density Housing Overlay District, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
Does that address the parking question?
No.
Is that something we need tonight, or does that come with the final plat approval? Is it general?
I, I don't think legally you need to address it tonight, but I would recommend...
I just, everything just disappeared.
You do.
I, okay.
So my concerns are, you know, like probably everybody here, I've been up there stomping around that property, and the gradients are steep, and the space is very confined, I think, for the, for the densities that are there. And, you know, my concern really about the parking, it's about the parking as well as, as fire safety. And I've talked with the fire department, and they feel like that, that they can live with the, the configuration that the developers come up with, although probably a little bit of dis-ease in that approval. But my feeling is that I would like to see, quite frankly, I'd like to see the density reduced, you know, even a few units to accommodate the parking and just create a little bit more space so that, that if, if there's a problem or an accident that sets off a fire, that that whole complex isn't toasted before the fire department gets there. I, you know, I know they're extremely responsive, very quick, but they have to hook on down at Murphy Lane, you know, for water, and, and if it's up at the highest set of buildings, they, if, if the pressure isn't quite right, they may have to pump with an intermediate truck to get up there. And hooking all of that stuff up, you know, depending on, on the rate and the heat of the fire and so on, could cause some pretty serious problems. And, you know, I, I, that is, the safety concern is, is really what drives my reticence about the project. I really like the idea that it's bicycle friendly. I mean, e-bikes are here to stay, no matter what you think, and I'm probably the oldest curmudgeon for being against e-bikes, but, you know, I mean, I find myself thinking about getting one for my wife. But anyway, that aside, I, I like that, and I like to, I like what they're trying to do, but I just am uneasy about, about the density versus the fire safety. So, you know, I, I would like to address that parking issue in relationship to, to density, and that's why I asked the question, if we're bound to the, the general master plan, if we approve this. Because if we can tweak it, you know, I'd be a lot more comfortable.
Might note a few things. First, I'd see the parking and the fire safety as unrelated. You know, if you have two more spaces, that's not going to change the fire protection of the building. Secondly, I would say that all of these buildings will be fire sprinkler. And third, the fire department is not providing a final approval of the plans, and I have heard them saying they may require now. Initially, they were not going to require this. They may, and they require that there be hydrants at each tier of buildings to address that concern. And I think their bigger concern is the grade of the, the road, turning a, you know, big fire truck on a 12, on a, you know, significant, but, but in terms of parking and fire safety, I don't see those as being related.
Well, I, I kind of do. If they have to pull a truck in, and there's no place for it to get in, and the ambulance has to get by a truck to pull somebody out, you know, that, to me, creates a safety problem. But, you know, I mean, again, speculative, and it's, it's an opinion, so I don't want to, I don't want to be dragged away.
I want to just weigh in quickly on the master plan process we're looking at here. And I haven't looked at the, Zachariah asked me to look at an access issue, so that's the extent to which I've reviewed any of these documents so far, but the master plan that we would be approving is the master plan. And so the applicant can come back and ask for it to be amended, but we need to go through a process. So we're not going to be revising the master plan as part of a process later. This is it. And so if you have concerns, now's your moment.
And doesn't it constitute a preliminary plat approval? But the presumption is that the preliminary plat is going to largely follow what the master plan shows.
Greg?
When we had the public hearing on this, the neighbor voted, the neighbor voiced serious concerns about drainage, stormwater drainage, that he's currently now getting stormwater drainage on his property from this property. Has that, has that been addressed at all?
Well, I can tell you that the county engineer and the road supervisor and my department have worked at drainage and, and have not granted final storm drain design approvals, but I feel confident that the county can approve the master plan, that the preliminary design we have seen is, if not adequate, at least, you know, likely to be adequate unless it is, you know, designed by our government.
Is that the property that another offers on? Or is it? Okay.
So I'll make a substitute motion. Can I make a substitute motion to my motion?
Yes.
Okay. I move to adopt the proposed ordinance approving application of the High Density Housing Overlay District 15, and the development agreement, and the retired master plan?
Retitled.
Huh?
Retitled.
Retitled. That's funny. That's funny, I got to say. I'm just saying. To 1187 and 1189 Murphy Lane, Murphy Flats, HDHO Development, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Did you, I thought, you got the development agreement, didn't you? I think she did, she didn't.
Yeah, I did. And the retired.
Substitute motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Greg Halliday. And it's clear enough for records? Does it address everything with the, what was outlined in the summary? Well, okay, substitute motion on the, any discussion on this?
Did we get a second?
Greg seconded.
Okay.
I thought, I thought y'all needed to include the parking if you're...
We could do a second motion.
Well, the parking would be a variance at later stage if, normally it would be. So if somebody wanted, so if they're going to submit their preliminary plat, and that plat requires a parking variance, at that point in time, they would normally make application for one, or?
Well, the problem is the master plan assumes it gets approved, so I don't know what's about that.
Um...
It's true, parking spaces not on the master plan.
Well, it's always, seems to be somewhat debatable what binding effect the master plans have, because they obviously can be amended.
Sure.
In, in a non-substantive manner. However, if it's approved with what appears to be a variance, then that's kind of a different thing.
Yeah, I don't think we can approve it with what, assuming a variance exists.
Well, I was trying to, I was trying to see if it would require, I mean, typically an exception is, you know, is a variance, but I want to make sure that...
We don't have an administrative master plan amendment.
Well, are we, so are we considering, so we're considering that the application of HDHO in this case is not legislative?
No, it is.
So then you can approve it with the variance, if you're comfortable with the variance.
And that's, and that's what I just wanted to mention, is that, that you wouldn't actually run this through the standard variance process unless you wanted it to be. I think that you are authorized to provide the exception if it's a, the High Density Housing Overlay exception.
And we don't, doesn't, so if the variance process requires a public hearing and a notice, does it?
Variance, that's a, that's a quasi-putition review that goes to the hearing officer. But again, that's for like a standard variance. I think the, the High Density Housing Overlay ordinance provides you enough legislative discretion to operate.
It's a variance in itself.
Well, it's a...
I wouldn't use the term variance.
Okay, sorry.
Well, yeah.
And I didn't say they require...
I mean, if you, if you approve, if it's a legislative action, then you're basically, you know, approving it as its own specific land use code.
Okay. Yep, I'm cool with that.
All right, second, substitute motion is on the table.
I'm not saying how to vote, I'm just cool with taking it.
Right, gotcha. Substitute motion's on the table. Any further discussion? Jaylen?
Yeah, I, I kind of feel the same way Terry does, and so let me get this clear in my head. If we approve this tonight, we are or are not approving the parking spaces and...
It sounds like if we're presented with a master plan that doesn't include the standard parking ratio, we are more or less giving it our blessing because we're saying we're okay with the plan.
Unless you explicitly say that that's not going to be part of your, you know, proof.
But I am comfortable with four bike spots for every parking place that's being, you know. What, you want to get five?
You talking about e-bikes?
Trikes.
Trikes, unicycles.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, so the next approval, and I assume this gets approved at the county level, is the plat, preliminary and final, and so at that point, if we're still not comfortable with access, emergency EMS, and fire access, we can just not approve the plat?
Yes.
Because what I'm hoping is, is the applicants will take Terry's concerns to heart and possibly come up with a, with a more, with a better...
Actually, those final approvals are, you know, inherent to the preliminary plat and final plat process, so those are definitely required before we present those to the county.
And I, I think the fire department will look at it more, knowing that it's received the overlay, and instead of like this, oh, we might do this. It's like, okay, we got the overlay, we're trying to do it, how do we make it work? And then that's when traffic issues and other infrastructure stuff would get addressed. Is my understanding. Any further discussion?
One quick question.
Yep.
Zach, so when somebody's building, like a hotel or an apartment or a store, how much parking are they supposed to have? What's our, what's our code on that?
It's, it differs by use, so if Section 6.1 of Land Use Code has a table that compares use type to parking requirements, so for residential uses, it's like a per unit conversion of parking spaces, so like a studio is 1.5 parking spaces per unit, whereas like a three or four bender house, you'd get two spaces per household. On the commercial side, it's like five square feet, right? So I don't want to go through all of them, so I bet that one case law is.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the substitute motion?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six to one with Morrison in opposition. Next up is item X, approving subdivision improvements agreement for Wingate Village Subdivision. Zachariah?
Okay, so the Wingate Village subdivision final plat has been approved previously, and in order for that final plat approval to be, you know, fully executed, the subdivision improvement agreement needed to be completed, approved, and recorded, and that sets forth the developer's obligation to complete the required infrastructure improvements, and that's what this, in effect, does for the 1917 subdivision.
Question?
Go ahead.
What does BUD stand for?
Planned Unit Development.
Please. I move to approve the Wingate Village PUD, SIA, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second.
Motion made by Terry Morris, seconded by Curtis Wells. Discussion. Seeing none?
Oh, wait.
Oh?
Oh, okay, it's just a typo. On the second page of that improvement agreement? On the second page of that improvement agreement, Item A, very top of the page, it's the Department of Land Service Services rather than Development, but that was it? Just kinda, I didn't really go with a fine-tooth comb, but that did stick out.
Looks like you got it, though. Do we need to note those edits in the motion?
I'll restate my...
I can fix it before you say it.
I'll restate my motions. I move to approve the Wingate PUD, SIA, authorize the chair with the noted...
Corrections.
Thank you.
Corrections and improvements, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Terry Morris.
Second.
Substitute motion seconded by Jaylen Hawks. Any discussion? Other edits? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Was that an aye? Uh, all those opposed? Motion passes five to one with Paxman in opposition and Councilmember McGann temporarily out of the room. Next up is Item Y, approving proposed bid award to Henderson Builders for the infrastructure improvements at Wingate Village subdivision through the Community Development Block Grant Program postponed from September 3rd. Zachariah.
Okay, so this item was postponed from September 3rd because we needed to get to the subdivision improvements agreement completed and approved prior to awarding the bid to Henderson Builders. We also needed to finalize the documentation for the independent contractors agreement. But just to give you a little bit of a reminder as to what we're talking about here, my office submitted a community development block grant application to support the infrastructure improvements at Wingate Village, the GIA and Fort Worth Housing Development, developed by the Housing Authority, and so we assisted in making that project more financially viable. The project has also received loan and municipal tax credits, which are federal tax credits, and so we went through a competitive bidding process, and Henderson Builders was selected as the competitive bidder, or as the selected contractor, I guess, and so the independent contractors agreement covers the portion of the required improvements at Wingate Village that are covered by the Community Development Block Grant awarded to the county. So in effect, the county is serving as a pass-through to support this project, which is $350,000, so pretty big deal, but the rest of the infrastructure improvements would be covered by separate contract, BJ Henderson, the GIA and the Housing Authority.
Curtis.
I move to approve the bid award to Henderson Builders for infrastructure work in the Wingate Village PUD for which Grand County received a Community Development Block Grant Award and execute the independent contractors agreement for the specified scope of work.
Second.
Motion made by Curtis Wells, seconded by Terry Morris. Any discussion? Chris?
So I didn't see the dollar amount. Can you clarify, Zachariah, if we're approving the full amount of the bid or just the CDVG?
Just the CDVG portion.
So, what was the full bid? Is it in here for the CDVG portion or is it for the entire project? I'm just a little confused about what, where dollar value is being approved.
It's just the, it's just the amount awarded to the county for the CDVG funds, so the scope of work amounts to the CDVG award is $354,000.
Okay. All right.
Do we need that called out in the motion?
Well, the bid was for more than that, right?
For the full project.
This is just the CDVG?
Correct.
So what was that amount, real quick, Zachariah? Three hundred and...
$354,000.
No, I think that, yeah, it looks like the motion's sufficient to cover that, because it says for which Grand County received a Community Development Block Grant Award. I mean, it'd be probably better to put the actual dollar figure in, but...
We can do it real quick. Three fifty-four. Just so we're not on the hook for the rest.
Well, I just wanna make it clear that we're, Grand County is approving up to that grant award, and then I, as I understand it, Housing Authority's gonna contract for the remainder, right?
I can't, I can't find the amount in the contract.
$354,000.
Okay, so I would like to make a substitute motion to approve the bid award to Henderson Builders of up to $354,625 for infrastructure work in the Wingate Village PUD for which Grand County received a Community Development Block Grant Award and execute the independent contractors agreement for the specified scope work.
Would the rest be covered by...
It was clean and you screwed it up.
Sorry, I, I just didn't want Henderson to feel like we were only funding up to, but I like it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mary, was that an aye?
Yes.
Motion passes six to nothing with Councilmember Paxman out of the room.
Who did, who did second the...
Terry did.
Yeah.
Both. Excellent. All right, that brings us to consent agenda. Item AA, approving state contract for the purchase of a plow and sander for Ford F-350 pickup truck for the road department.
Motion to approve the consent agenda and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second.
Motion made by Curtis Wells, seconded by Terry Morris. Discussion?
Do we have a copy of that?
I don't see it.
The item, I didn't see it on the packet.
I'm not seeing it on the dais, but maybe.
Oh, well, was that on the dais? Well, I want it from your packet.
It's in there.
Yes.
Is it?
Yeah. Item AA?
I looked, I looked twice on mine.
Semi-services.
What's 425 on it? 425, all right. I mean, I...
424. 424, but Cody put his name on it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All those abstaining?
Well, you didn't give me time to find this.
It's already got six votes, so you can...
All abstaining.
All right. Motion passes six to zero with Councilmember Hawks abstaining, because she didn't read her packet.
I just looked a fourth time.
I, I withdraw my...
Elbows are getting sharp. It's that time of night.
All right, next, I, I apologize. I apologize.
It is not...
I apologize, it was not in an early, but you were so quick to review the packet that it was downloaded before it was included. Next up, Item BB, discussion items, discussion on calendar items and public notices. Bryony Hill.
All right, for September, September 19th, 9:00 AM, Budget Advisory Board, and those continue every Thursday at 9:00 AM in the chambers. September 27th, change of local government schedule.
Yeah, I, on the 19th, of course, there's also the ribbon cutting for the celebration and opening of Aggie Boulevard, and since the county was a major contributor to that, making that possible, gonna have to go on our calendar. The other thing is on the 26th, I have a, I have an email from AOG saying they're having a meeting at 11:30 that's, an e-meeting, video conferencing meeting, so if you wanna put that on, fine, I'm gonna try to figure out how that's to occur. That's all I have.
For October, one thing I have, October 24th, is that the Budget Advisory Board meeting will be at the Travel Council conference.
Wait, when is that?
October 24th. October 24th, that Thursday, it's gonna be at the Travel Council conference.
Oh, okay. Is the, so is the Travel Council joining us?
No, I just, if we have to move locations, I just wanna be somewhere where I have access to the county's network. And going over to the library, I don't have that, so I asked just to use their room.
Actually, I, I do. The Fire District Commissioners are wanting to meet with you all, and so they are, I had offered 2:00 PM time for one of the council meeting days, October 1st or 15th, or even the 5th Tuesday of October. They're, they let me know this today that they're preferring October 1st at 2:00. That's 11 days from now, and I was thinking maybe you all would want to have the Travel Council Board that same day as well, maybe 1:00 or, I don't know how much time you think you'll need for each of these. That is a regular council meeting at 4:00. Fire District is requesting 2:00 or whatever, whatever you all think, 2:30. So on the first, October 1st, so I'm kinda bringing up two things at once. The Fire District Commissioners wanting to do a joint meeting with you all, as well as Councilmember Wells' request to have a joint Travel Council Board meeting with you all.
I thought he wanted to do that next week, correct, Kurt?
Yeah.
Yeah, he wants that sooner.
Well, yeah, 'cause we got a regular meeting for October 1st, so if we could get, hopefully we can hash some things out with them next week, so that we can vote on that position statement on the 1st.
Wasn't there, wasn't there something else that we just added on to the meeting next week?
Yeah, the judge.
The judge's thing.
That'll just be an action item. Yeah, next week, that's right. Okay, so let me, let me just ask you first about, about the Fire District at 2:00 on the 1st, does that work for you all? That's your regular meeting date at 4:00?
How long do they think it's gonna take? Is it gonna take two hours?
It should take more than an hour.
If you want, 3:00, 2:30, I don't, I don't know. You tell me. What they wanna do is have it be an educational, get on the same page, understand all the different issues so that a step can be made forward, because we seem kinda stuck.
On this ISO thing still, is that what we're talking about?
I think that could be part of it. I don't think that's the whole intention of the meeting, it's, it's just to get everyone all on the same page, the Commissioners as well as the County Council.
So what are we talking about there? Are you talking about the fire?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I've been trying to do some research for, for them about what their, what their options are in terms of even annexing, and I don't, I haven't gotten a response from LaGrand on that. I, we don't entirely know exactly what district they are, what kind of district they are, but if they're the type of fire district that basically became, the existing ones are grandfathered, we can't create new ones, and so you probably can't annex either. But anyway, I have been in somewhat communication with Moab Valley Fire District. I think that they're interested in the, whatever, they know that they're gonna provide service outside of their current boundaries, and, but you know, they just want the easiest thing possible, as we probably all do, for figuring out how to pay them for that. Obviously, as a taxing district, if they expanded their boundaries, then they expand their tax base and the revenue comes easy, but if you can't do that and you have to go with the service district, then, you know, the option could be to retool the Thompson Springs Special Service District into something else that's, serves that role, as opposed to having like four different fire districts in the county. But the problem is the service district is, you, you can only levy a tax for an infrastructure bond and not MNO or operations, which was, which would be what the district would be paying any other district that they were contracted with, and so you wouldn't be able to levy a property tax for that either, even if it did pass with the voters in the district.
So the first option sounds like the best one.
Yeah, but it may not be legal.
Okay, but we need to, might we have an answer to that before this October 1st?
I guess I'll keep, keep after LaGrand and see if he'll give an answer.
What if you just tell him we're doing it and see how he reacts?
Yeah, well, the Lieutenant Governor would be the one to answer that question. So, you know, I think that...
That seems like the cleanest option.
Well, it seems like, like TJ's open to it if it is legal, and we did discuss the ISO issue and got a response that no, it would not affect, expanding out into the county would not affect their ISO unless a community developed to such a size out in the county that they would have to build a fire station somewhere else. But until that point in time, their ISO would not be affected.
Right.
In their current, in their current boundaries. And so I don't think that that's an issue, but the, the issue of annexing really is that can they even do it if they wanted to, or if we all wanted to? We don't know that. And I guess I could, you know, inquire the Lieutenant Governor's office, because they're the ones that approve annexations and new district boundaries.
Yeah, Castle Valley annexed additional area into theirs.
What kind of, are they a fire district?
Yes.
Well, I mean, Moab Valley Fire did too, before they changed the law, and I think the last annexation was in the late 80s, maybe? And I don't know when the law changed that kinda did away with fire, those types of fire districts, those taxing fire districts.
I look forward to a lot of, a lot more answers on October 1st at 3:00.
3?
3:00, yes.
Well, it sounds like we're halfway there, we just gotta know if, what our options are. It's not like we're gonna be reinventing the wheel, it's gonna be like you can either do this or you can do that, so.
3, you're 3.
Let's go 3. Because I also feel like we're not gonna wrap it up if we want it that day, so I think an hour should be enough.
Well, I'll send a, I'll send something to the Lieutenant Governor's office and see if we can get a definitive answer about whether or not the Moab Valley Fire District can annex.
And then maybe a little placeholder as an action item at a regular meeting if it sounds like it's a pretty complex one.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure what the annexation process is, but if, if that's not possible, then it definitely gets more complicated, because I wouldn't necessarily recommend creating an entirely new special service district just to be the go-between between the other three service districts. That'd be a nightmare.
I concur. And would we be the board for that and the Thompson Special Service?
Probably, you'd probably end up, yeah.
Let's figure this out on August 1st.
Or maybe October 1st.
That's what I meant.
3:00, okay, for fire districts, so can I finish?
Please.
So the, the next item would be trying to get, I don't know what the Travel Council Board members, what their dates are, but I do have some clues on when the chambers is available, and we can talk about, and get some dates from you guys that I could offer to the Travel Council Board, since we're trying to put together a meeting in the next 10 days. So this Friday is available, the study committee has canceled their meeting, the chambers is open all day. That doesn't get very much notice, Elaine is out of town until Thursday, or, and then goes out again on Monday. The chambers is off...
Will she get back?
She, I guess she's back just on Friday and then out again on Monday for one day. One day, sorry. Now, if we're thinking about the Justice Court Judge application process and getting that in the paper, I would recommend Tuesday, the 24th, or Friday, the 20th, I mean, if, because that's a time constraint, too. Chambers is open all day, Tuesday, the 24th.
And all day the 20th?
And all day the 20th, yes. Until the Planning Commission meeting on the 24th.
As for advertising, if they reopen the Justice Judge application, we have to advertise them. That deadline's Monday, correct?
They will work with this on Tuesdays, yeah, but Mondays are their normal deadlines? Mondays are the TI's normal deadlines for advertising a job post. It might be a little later.
I don't know, I never pulled it together Monday. How many, can people pull up Friday? Do my better, or the...
I, I just don't know what I can pull together for the board, but if you guys could give me your preferences, I can... So let me run it by you again, any time on this Friday, the 20th is available, if you want a meeting here.
Sorry, we're talking about instead of a Thursday meeting? Wasn't there a Thursday, this is with the Travel Council.
Travel Council Board, joint meeting. I don't remember a Thursday.
Oh, sorry, maybe that was in my head. We're, yes, okay, go ahead.
Here's our, some times that look available. Friday, the 20th, anytime, that's this Friday. Tuesday, anytime, and then we could make the Justice Court Judge, if you guys were to go that way, to vote toward opening up that application process. On the 25th, it could be first thing in the morning, or one o'clock or later, that's Wednesday. And then the 26th, we have Budget Advisory Board all morning, and then Paper Performance. So I'm saying three o'clock or later. And then any, actually, we do have former government on Friday, so Friday morning up until noon.
I am unavailable till the 26th, but I don't want to hold up the process, so if people are able to beat in some of those earlier dates, I think that we as a council are on the same page about the.
Opening of Judge?
Yeah, as well as the TRT stuff, so I, I, I wouldn't be chapped without being able to have an availability. Otherwise, it, for me, it'd be Thursday after the Budget Advisory Board.
I think it's very important you're having a meeting.
Okay. Well, Thursday is.
I mean, if there's going to be a letter, you would be signing the letter. I don't know that you have to be here to, to. I'm just.
Well, send out a thing to the Travel Council and see which one of those days is working best.
I think those are the ones.
I can send all those dates. Is that what you're asking me to do?
No, I don't see any trouble with, personally, with pulling the meeting on the 6th, or excuse me, the 26th, or the 27th. The only thing is, is that I, I don't, wouldn't want to go public with our instrument of support for the proposed legislation until we've had a chance to see that on the Travel Council. So we can put a placeholder again, item, and just have that in the IAS one day, you know? Or if we did that on Thursday, that may give us the 26th, you know, enough time to have that sent out Friday morning, actually, if we did. I don't see any problem in pulling it on the 26th. As far as the judicial stuff, I don't know if those extra few days are really going to cause some partner for that committee.
Lose a whole other week.
Yeah, I don't see, I think I'll be recommending against opening up the advertisement that way, but it's not good. Certainly otherwise.
Senator's mixed messages.
I think TRT is more important.
Wow. We want to do both in the same, we want to do both things in the same.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. I mean, it is what it is. And if the, the nominee and commission has still not been convened in a week, then that's a different thing, but hopefully it'll be, I mean, I don't understand why we don't have a fifth member yet, as it is, so.
So what about this week on the 19th or 20th?
Elaine's not here the 19th, but the 20th is available.
I think we should shoot for the 20th.
That works.
For the county, for the Travel Council on our meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, the other one you wanted?
It'd have to be first thing in the morning.
That's fine, I mean, maybe six o'clock, shoot.
I gotta drive a bunch of high schoolers to Cedar City at 10 AM, so.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock's great.
Okay, so that's your first choice that I'll put out to the board at 8 AM this Friday?
Unless they want to do it in Cedar City.
Okay.
Can I get a second choice out of you? I'm sorry.
And you're gone until 26, yeah. So, I mean, as much as it pains you to hold a meeting, I'm, I'm okay. I, I think it's, you know, better if you're there, but.
Could you call in?
Possibly.
We should probably get a second choice sometime before the 26th.
So if you're doing it.
Sorry, do you know when you can call in? Not yet, no, it's, I'm not there. Wednesday would probably be easy, like, that's just one day sooner, so.
Tuesday, could you call in Tuesday?
I, I, I don't know, it's kind of, my itinerary is TBD.
It's time to get there Friday.
Come on, we're having Friday.
Let's just see, we're having this discussion Friday, we need you here. Knock and roll. Second, third choice, it gets messy, and people are like, well, I'd rather do it the next week, so I'll respond. It's not a survey monkey this.
That's not.
Let's see if we can get it, let's, let's throw out the idea of this Friday at 8 AM, and see if we get a response.
Okay.
Great.
Got it.
Thank you.
Did you get that on the calendar?
All right, so the planning opportunities, Building official, followed by meeting Economic Development Central, because we have a different plan, that gives you a copy of your election registry, causes, actions officer, causes, area, full deputies, causes, emergency dispatch, causes, and Big Services Assistant Manager, open and, special events, September 18th through the 22nd is, I believe, is trying to make a list. 21st through 22nd, October 4th through 6th, out of life. October 11th through 14th, on 240, real running event. October 13th, Archie, the traffic forum. October 24th through 27th, on Mountain Bike Festival, and also October 24th through 27th, Jeep Jamboree. And also, there are no four district vacancies in the pocket, even if it's during the year of the year, for all of Districts, so.
Brian, what was on the 24th of September, again? I missed that.
October.
No, September, you said.
On the calendar?
Yeah. Where's the special events?
What special events?
Calendar.
September 24th. Um, it's on the board, there's nothing that I announced. Oh, it's October 24th, not reading. The Budget Advisory Board, which is the Travel Council.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's what you, you, Travel Council called, got it. Okay, I just missed that. Make sure I didn't miss anything.
Next up for discussion is item CC, reviewing proposed updates to the Viewgate Terrace Master Plan associated with the HDHO 35B request at 12:46 and 12:48, South Highway 191. Zachariah.
So, you know, I've put together the agenda summary, and, oh, I didn't, some thoughts on the updated master plan that Will Hanson, one of the partners in this development, is also here to address the council. In a nutshell, the master plan proposal for the Viewgate Terrace, excuse me, High Density Housing Overlay Application, has, you know, received a recommendation for approval by the Planning Commission, had a public hearing with the County Council, time that it was up for a vote. The County Council was clearly not in favor of voting for it as it was designed at that time. Applicants then presented changes to the master plan, and still was not apparent that the County Council was ready to vote in favor of it, and so the applicant is here yet again with further revised master plan that is significantly scaled down from what was originally presented to the county and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. But for all intents and purposes, you know, the County Council did not provide very much clarity to the applicant in terms of what it expected to see, as far as changes to the master plan, so, you know, the applicant wanted to bring this most current master plan in front of you for a vote, and I encouraged him to bring it to you in the form of a discussion before you took formal action on it, to make sure that before you do take formal action on it, they have one more chance to, you know, get your opinions on the changes, and, you know, if it's, if it's some small amendments to it, and it is currently drawn, you know, it'd be better to discuss those rather than going back to, to step zero after, you know, if they have them. So that's my perspective on it. The applicant is certainly welcome to share their perspectives and their goals and objectives for tonight, if you're going to facilitate conversation, but decide on what happens from here.
Greg? Just a, just a quick question. Your, your building A, is that the proper setback on the property line? That, that one?
It is now.
It is now, okay. So all the questions I had?
And were there changes made to the multifamily, or just the removal of the restaurant? So, sorry, the buildings B through E?
Well, so those, those shifted to, in the direction of the highway, so they are, you know, closer to the original core. And, again, they were being, being proposed at 35 feet in height, rather than at 42 feet in height, which is what they were originally proposed at.
And B is also a proper setback?
So that, I mean, this.
It is known that on B was planned.
Yeah, it's only 10 feet. I have to look at that, you know, it didn't, it should be, I didn't examine that, no. So I have to look at that.
Okay. What's the setback? 30 feet, 35 feet, same size?
It would be the height of the building, so it should be 35 feet.
Yeah, that would be a problem, if it's only 10.
Yeah, but yeah.
That would be a problem, if it's only 10 feet.
So D is setback adequately, but.
We're not sure about B.
I don't think that's an incremental change, you know, between now and when we take action, I think, you know, more generally speaking, the applicant needs to know if they're close.
Yeah, that's all the, I mean, those are the, all the two issues, I saw.
So, the, the questions I have center around, first of all, with, is it possible to put the restaurant back in? That's one question, and the reason for that, that I'm bringing that up is because it may help reduce the, you know, trips into town from the hotel, you know, and thereby ease up that intersection a little bit. Plus, it might offer another alternative of dining for this community. And, you know, I mean, I, that's just, that's one question. And the second question I have is parcel three.
Three?
The 11.57 acres. I don't know how to say this gracefully, so I won't mince words. Are you willing to need restrict that? Or if not, confine any single-family activity to the west side, so that it stays away from the center line of that arroyo going up to the, to the drainage retention ponds up there? Those are really the only two issues I have. I, you know, I applaud the, the reduction in density, because I think that was highly needed, and, and, but I, I do, I'm a little bit chagrined about the restaurant, and, and I would, I would, even though it may happen well after I'm long gone, I would hate to see another applicant, or, you know, the current owners, come in and, and try to, to put another development in the, in the parcel three area, without having the experience of, and conversations that have gone along with, with this whole process. So those are really my only, my only concerns, or questions, and, and, you know, I don't, well, I'll leave it at that for now. Go ahead.
I was just going to make one quick comment. You know, I think one question came up on what, about whether parcel three can be further subdivided, and, and my interpretation of that question is that the answer would be no, because it would be included in this master plan, so this master plan would be in effect, and so if further subdivision were desired at a later time, that would constitute an amendment to the master plan, which would have to be improved legislatively. So the, the building information does show that parcel three would have one single-family residence. Prior to you taking action, I would, I would encourage the applicant to show at least an approximate building footprint for that, and, and location at least, but, but you, there would not be any sort of automatic right to further develop, subdivide parcel three.
I think that's a little gray, so I would do that in a note, just add a note, to note effect.
I would look into more.
That answers that question. I've got a question. Does the county have access easements for maintenance for that detention basin, or outfall from that? Detention basin back there?
It's a good question, and, you know, I don't see anything on the plan that would change anything that does exist, but, you know, something, I, I'd probably get, just to secure that, I think, though.
Yeah, yeah. That's a good point. So I'm kind of, I'm, I'm, I haven't been able to attend the last two meetings from when we first heard from the developers, so bear with me if I'm playing a little catch-up with just the, like, the highlights of changes to the project to date. So we've lowered the density on the proposed, what were they, four-story buildings?
So the changes are that two buildings were entirely removed from the southern side of the parcel, the southern district side of the parcel. And the restaurant was removed from the western side of the parcel, sorry, so the two buildings were removed from the eastern side of the parcel, after having also reduced their heights. They were then removed entirely. Buildings B, C, D, and E were originally composed at 42 feet in four units, in 32 units, instead of 24 units each, at 42 feet ago. Those were reduced to 24 units each at 35 feet, and shifted to the north, towards, towards the highway.
So reduced in height and density?
Yeah, so the overall unit count has come down by.
Two buildings removed.
Forty percent. Forty percent.
Okay.
It was initially 218 units.
And how does this, with the projects approved, I mean, where does this put us on our threshold for high-density housing with the units that are proposed here? We're still under. We're still under?
I can give you the exact numbers. So, to date, you have approved 50 units, HDHO units. This would, this would be another 97. So, you know, 147, that leaves you at 153. There are at least another 186 that have submitted applications. Well, yeah, 186 that have submitted applications.
What was the number for this one again? 90?
97.
And what was it prior to the changes? 218?
Well, that was total, so.
It was like 140?
175.
Well, I would say that I think it's good to see some compromise on this. It's kind of a, from my perspective, it's, this is one of the areas in the high-density housing overlay where it was kind of tough because we're begging for affordable housing, but folks that have invested in rural residential, it's kind of hard to make those gel, you know, high-density developments with rural residential. But beggars can often be choosers, and so the best we can do is, if we're incentivizing these projects, is to try to sand off the edges as much as possible. And on paper, you guys have made some pretty significant changes to your development, and I think that's, that's much appreciated in respect to the folks that are adjacent and contiguous to this property that, you know, are concerned about their property values and, and, you know, the concerns that they have. So, I, personally, I hate to go down a path where we nitpick it to death. We either need to approve it or not.
I like the changes. I think it's, uh...
Yeah.
Do you mind speaking on the idea of that restaurant or some other kind of commercial space there? Is that something that would be, I hesitate to say, easy to add back in, or is that, you know, is it kind of? Let me hear your take on it, I guess.
Sure, sure. Well, part of the issue, I'll just be, I'll just be, pretty candid.
Yeah.
Once it was determined that the usage of the land, originally when we had done this, the, if you look at your map, it might be a little bit difficult to tell, but about halfway up on parcel three on that west side is the approximate location of where I want to build the home. We had had the apartments all the way back up to that, near, near to that, so it was gonna be just below it. People said, "Don't build a house there. Don't build an apartment. It's not even worth it." But it wasn't something that we were concerned about. I mean, it may sound, try whatever you can try down there, but, you know, we just wanted to, we took out the trailers, we took out that trailer park. Part of it was that we had determined that we wanted to do housing in Moab, because we had a conversation with the county office in the first campaign. So, we, that was something that we had determined to do. The feeling we got that was, we got the feeling that luxury of not having affordable housing next to a home was going to be the emphasis, we determined that I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put myself at a standard lower than what other people are being afforded, and that's the bottom line. So, we moved it down to where that home will, my home that I built, will maintain the value of these other people that are being afforded that same privilege. So, that's impressive.
So, are you willing to, like, put a building envelope on this parcel three so we'd know where that thing goes?
I don't believe so. I mean, because in essence, that would be, that would be forever and ever, even after we have USC come in, all these other things are going to happen, and I don't, that would be wise on our part.
Well, if you're gonna build, if you're gonna build your home on it, why would you object to that?
Did you restrict all of it?
No, no, not need restrict it, I'm just, put a building envelope where you're gonna build your home.
To show you where, I would, I'm sorry, I guess I don't know what you mean by building envelope.
Well, building envelope would be a...
The approximate location.
Approximate location of where you're gonna put the home on the property.
Oh, I have no problem doing that, for sure. That's fine. Not a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what happened to you.
And I would just say, from my perspective, you know, whether it's a flat mode or we come to the determination legally that, you know, that's inherent in approving the master plan, you know, the base zoning on that real property is rural residential, that's one unit per acre, so, you know, approving the master plan of 121 units total, clearly you're going way above what would be allowed just by the base zoning. So, you know, it seems like, you know, parcel three is not eligible for future subdivision unless, you know, things dramatically change in Grand County, and we wouldn't want to allow that. But in either case, whether it's a flat mode or it's just inherently understood by adoption or approval of the master plan, you know, it seems like another legislative act of approval would be needed for the purpose of dividing that property. Right? I mean, whichever mechanism is needed to establish that understanding.
I think because there's just nothing shown on that second piece of what being clearest, I'll have a note. Everyone's on the same page.
Yeah. Those access easements for the county is really the only outstanding thing in my mind.
And I'm sorry, I could have addressed that. On part of the original submission, had a road continuing up with the Colza's Act, and that has been established. So, the easement's already written, and it would just be placed in there as part of their access, and then there's an additional easement back there if you would pull it, if it was already drawn in. So, it's in place, we just do it, record it.
Okay.
It's there. Plus, additional easement.
We'll need to have people descriptions for that and probably just show it on the plan.
It was happening already.
Okay.
One other, one other thing that was brought up in three-four by Adam, this was concerned with groundwater and sewer. And the way it's set up currently is there's a pressure-reducing valve just to the east of the hotel, which reduces it from everything down from there. The solution to that is that we remove that pressure-reducing valve, we put it below the hotel and below where that T is, and then that will provide high pressure up the hill for fire protection.
And I just have one more question. I don't, I don't mean to be obtuse, well, I guess I am, but I didn't really hear the answer to the question about the restaurant or the commercial use.
Well, essentially, remove the petition, the residential section in the back, as is being mandated on the east side. If you're gonna mandate a cushion for residential over there, I quite honestly don't feel that I need to sacrifice my own property value on my home because of having partners in a close proximity. If we're doing that on the east side to protect those people over there, then I, quite frankly, I don't think I should have to do it on the west side. Okay? Is that fair?
Well, Sid answers the question.
Sure, yeah. Which is, I want...
This is good, Ted, right?
That's all I have. So, you want to get some feedback from the council on doing this back, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess I just, I don't wanna, I don't want a situation where we come back and we've had this conversation here today, or an opportunity for conversation today, and then on October 1st, you know, he comes for a vote, and you say, "Hey, wait a minute. Actually, you know, we wanna see this changed and that changed and this changed." You know, when you have that opportunity now? Because at the last meeting, when it was basically communicated that, you know, it wasn't ready for a vote of approval, but there weren't any follow-up specifics in terms of what changes would be needed to make it more, you know, approvable.
The only questions, like, of the citizens that have been reaching out to the council on this, that I've seen after these changes have made in Land Box pertain to the amount of units, those questions have been answered, the amount of units with the remaining buildings. And so, you know, that is a component of, you know, trying to find some compromise between everybody. I'm comfortable with where it's at and tend to support it next go-around, and, you know, council should, would be helpful to also make their intentions as clear as possible so that we've got some certainty for our process here.
And, and, and that may be, like, regardless of the changes, you know, if they're not extremely substantial, then I'm not likely to vote yes for it. You know, I think it would just be helpful for the applicant to have a good sense of, you know, whether they're, they're close to the target, right? Or if they're still way off. And so, what I've heard at a minimum are setbacks on buildings A and B, the easement to the county drainage, and, in fact, I think council needs to make a more definitive statement on this, but that's, you know, potential for future subdivision of that parcel three and related to that would be showing the building footprint of the proposed residential.
Yeah.
That's a good summary.
Yep. That's cool with that.
So, but, but part of that last point of the question, I think, is, is the council kind of of the opinion, like, they don't wanna see future subdivision of parcel three or they wouldn't be open to it, or?
What's the size of parcel three? So, that, with that parcel itself, that would also be included in the existing HDHO overlay, correct? So, that's kind of what you're getting at, is would that parcel be?
Well, my feeling is that, you know, the whole parcel, all 16 and plus acres are gonna be in the overlay, but once the overlay is attached, then you've got the master plan that governs what can be developed there. And so, you know, as is currently presented, the master plan shows that as one residential parcel. And so, you know, further clarification that that is to remain one residential parcel would ensure that that couldn't be further subdivided, and I think what our county attorney is saying is that, you know, there's enough ambiguity that, that there should be certainty through a flat mode if that is your legislative plan.
Well, yeah. I would like to have that certainty.
And I don't wanna misspeak for the county attorney, but, you know, so that is accurate.
I wasn't missing, but.
We need to, the council needs to be clear on whether we want that certainty for development of that lemonade or parcel. Do we want that to remain, not be subdividable forward, correct?
That's what I was suggesting.
Well, I mean, in essence, we are where we are now because we didn't want that in first place. So, what we have now is very, is very acceptable without the, you know, and I mean, the developer has responded very graciously and, you know, to, you know, our requests about having the buildings over on the east side of the property and so on and so forth, you know, and I didn't really have any problem with building a house on the, on the west side, you know. I, I think the easements are important, but, but, you know, I, I think that if you don't, I mean, if you, if you say, okay, well, you know, three years from now, if, if the HDHO is still in effect, you can come in and, and develop 120 more units, you know, that's not my intention, because then all of a sudden, the impacts that we're trying to avoid right now in that upper part of parcel will be back on the table again. And, and, you know, there'll be a lot of unintended consequences for that. I mean, you know, keeping it, keeping it residential and building a home on it is absolutely fine, but building apartment buildings on it, such as were proposed before, work fine, and that's why we are where we are. And I, you know, I applaud you for being responsive to what the county, you know, with the direction we've indicated to this. I mean, I'm, for me, I can look at this and say, okay, this is not good to go if you put a building envelope there and put the, you put the easements on it and, you know, build a house.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, I, I think that two things are at play here. One is that we don't know what life's gonna look like in Moab, it's like 10 years, right? So, to, to put it out there forever and ever, I think would be, we, we're responsible on our part, because we've essentially, you know, put it in this vigilance that it just cannot be changed. The other side of it is, is the opportunity to, say, develop residential lots that are large residential lots or there's homes, more than, more than just my own, maybe within their rural residential numbers, and, and have that opportunity to come back, say, in three years, say, okay, we're gonna put, you know, three homes, or two homes over on the east side, and two more, perhaps my children. I wanna kind of do what somebody else did today, divide it so my children can build a home. If I did that, then I don't have that option.
Yeah, no, actually, well, why, to me, it would be fair to, to leave that parcel, you know, regardless of how we refer to the parcel, parcel three, which is 11 acres, you know, and treat it as what the base zone was, which was rural residential, correct? And you can always come back at any time and apply for that high-density housing overlay to be, you know, reapplied or re-granted. Anybody can come at any time and apply to have the high-density housing overlay applied to their piece of property. So, as long as that, correct me if I'm wrong, as long as it's in the books, anyone can come back and say, hey, I think this needs to be granted to my property because of X, Y, and Z. But I don't, in my opinion, we shouldn't take away any rights of you to have with your base rural residential zone, which it's 11 acres and you can still subdivide, you know, plenty within that. That's what I think would be fair. We shouldn't take...
So, if you're already granting an increase of density by 105 units above where their base zone is?
But, so now that everything has been moved back onto parcel two, you know, with the removal of the restaurant and kind of trying to create some of that buffer that, you know, existing residents were requesting, is there a reason to keep the high-density overlay on parcel three?
Well, I mean, that's a decision that you need to make. You know, we tended not advocate for split-zone parcels, and that's kind of like what you'd be doing, although this is a little different because it's just, it's an overlay, it's on a zone designation.
But it's two parcels, right?
Are they legally distinct?
They're not, they're not, it is all one parcel currently.
I do not recommend that.
Okay. There we go.
But also, I think, you know, just in the spirit of the identity housing overlay, you need to be looking at this as one master plan parcel. But also I think, you know, just in the spirit of the high density housing overlay, you need to be looking at this as one master plan parcel. And, you know, you're, in the context of what you opened up with, you know, the, the base zoning on this parcel is all rural res, you know, it's mostly rural residential. And so I think we just need to really think about the whole parcel. You know, and, and even with a flat mode, the applicant, you know, some owner down the road could still come in and ask for the county to legislatively approve, legislatively approve a master plan amendment to remove that flat mode and allow them to further subdivide. I just think that for now, you know, regardless of what you choose to do, you just wanna make it as certain as possible in terms of what your legislative intent is with the approval. Should that be, you know, that's granted.
The point being, what do you think the density should be on this parcel, as a whole parcel?
Right.
And where?
And where?
Yeah, that, that's where I'm, I think rural residential, I mean, I, because when we passed this policy, it was polygons that cover all this property. But it, you know, do I think that 35 units per acre was perfectly appropriate for this location? No. I still probably don't, but we are beggars. And so I think, you know, again, in the nature of compromise, I think allowing the density we have, even though a polygon was 35 units per acre, I think we've allowed for quite a bit of density over what the rural residential already allowed you. And, and creating quite a bit more than most high density housing overlays of zones. And so in my opinion, leaving the remaining, you know, undeveloped stuff, which is 11 acres, you know, with basically in place with the base zone allowed up, in my mind's fair.
So, you know...
And then we get into a place where it's like, well, maybe, I mean, what are we talking about, changing it to 10 units per acre, 15 units per acre, like the remaining 11?
I didn't look at the resolution, but I think in the recitals, it's important to lay out sort of what the density was in this year and what's being approved, so that in the future, if this open parcel is reevaluated, all the information is there.
Yeah.
And, and another, you know, if the council feels that it is comfortable with the remaining 11, 275 acres and that parcel three to be subdivided at one unit per acre as per the base zone density, that could also be in the flat mode, right? That parcel three can be further subdivided at a maximum of 11 units or lots. And that, that's your, you have the prerogative to kinda designate what you want on that, on that flat mode respect further.
Which still allows for this scenario like he suggested, if he wants to split off a piece of property for all of his children, just like, you know, just like anybody else.
In which we would be comfortable. I mean, that's, that's, would be my, I would be fine with that. But to restrict it beyond that, like, no, I'm gonna stay in that one house with 11 acres.
Yeah. I don't blame you. I won't need it.
But again, I don't want you to discount the fact that you are also still granting a, you know, increase of density by 105 units above the last.
I'm not so...
Currently be allowed to do. So I don't, I don't want you to like fully discount that in terms of comparing it to other rural residential parcels. But, but nevertheless, I don't think, you know, 131 units is significantly different than 121.
So is that figure, so the 11 acres, if we left it in H D H 35? So it's quite, I mean...
I don't know. I just think it's clean if, if...
Not, maybe not a favor, but to, to leave him with rural residential with that 11, and if in the future, there's a potential need for more houses, come back up, say, hey, we wanna do another building or two, can I have H D H applied to, you know, this parcel? And we can do that. Yeah.
So what, what issue with, with that though? If it were 10 acres, or 10, let's say, I don't have 10 kids, let's say five kids, okay? If I have to, I'm gonna deed restrict 80%.
Well, these, uh, five lots is four.
And deed restrict my child's home.
Well, that, I mean, that's, you know, the, the, the point of the high density housing overlay was to create housing for people who live and work in Grand County. It was a negotiation between, you know, the community and this body to say, you know, there are impacts associated with increased density. In exchange for those impacts of growth, you know, the requirement is that you deed restrict 80% of units for people who live and work in Grand County. So that, you know, that's, that's the justification for the policy in large part. And, you know, in addition to the fact that, you know, we try to cite these higher density developments and program areas. But it, but again, I think, you know, let's not get too far off topic. It sounds like we've got, you know, pretty good direction. Or the, the council has given pretty good direction to the applicant with respect to the buildings that are shown. So the remaining question is, you know, how much additional development would you be comfortable with in parcel three, if at all?
I, you know, if, if there was some kind of beneficial thing in parcel two, you know, that like, uh, even if it wasn't a restaurant, but some kind of daycare or something, I would be okay with seeing some of that from parcel two move back into parcel three. But I feel like these five buildings are gonna kind of max out what, or come close to maxing out what's being requested at this point. Is that a fair understanding of, uh, the density?
In terms of the high density housing overlay?
Yeah.
Uh, it leaves, it leaves, uh, 153, 50 units.
Oh, okay.
So that's, you know, 100 and...
So is there...
80%. 190 or something. I don't know.
That's a staggering.
I think, I think it's, I think people are really happy with the changes. I know I am.
I'm good. What, what does everyone wanna do with the remaining 11 acres? Do you want it to remain the le, the 11 acres in H, in high density housing 35, which is for rural residential?
Well, no, no, I think maybe you're misunderstanding what, what would happen. Okay, so even if the high density housing overlay was attached to the entire parcel, it's, it is currently drawn, like that parcel three is not a legally existing parcel. It's all one parcel right now. So, so the high density housing overlay would get attached to the whole parcel. But the master plan would govern what could happen later down the road with preliminary flat and final flat. So what I'm saying is, like, as it's shown on the master plan right now, that is one lot for one residence.
Yeah.
Even though the high density housing overlay would be attached to it, it would still be restricted to that one residential lot and one residential. Now, I think what the county attorney is saying is clarify that with the flat mode. If you want to clarify that additional subdivision on that parcel three is allowed, then clarify that with the flat mode.
Can you do that? Just, it's allowed in accordance with the base zone, a rural residential?
No, as long as the density isn't exceeded, which it doesn't look like it is.
With the high density housing overlay?
No. Let's do that.
I, yeah.
I'm okay with that. I, I don't wanna do anything that's gonna restrict future, I mean, even if it's, we get five more houses that aren't deed restricted or whatever, that's still, um, quantity that would go into the market.
Yeah, that's up to you. I mean, you could say, you know, if, if it were, if I were up there, I would say, okay, if that's gonna be 11 more lots, show them on the master plan.
Yeah.
Deed restrict 80% of that in accordance with the high density housing overlay.
We really wanna make it deed restricted.
Well, that, you have to when you're in the high density housing.
Why can't we, well, because the parcel's not cut out.
Or, or, you know, they could deed restrict more units in the apartments. They don't have to be those, those single family lots in the back. I'm just saying 80% of the total development according to the high density housing overlay.
I mean, yeah, the density, the density is our currency, and I don't wanna like give away much of the currency.
No, I'm just, in the nature of just that 11 acres being treated as the base of rural residential, getting into, you know, mandatory deed restrictions and stuff like that, trying to find a way to just get that out of the high density housing overlay and just treat it as...
And the only way to do that would be to do a subdivision first, right? So that the applicant had multiple parcels and they can present what they want.
Cause it's all contiguous, right? Or it's all one parcel.
So, but I think again, you know, you need to, so it sounds to me like there are differences of opinion and now the applicant needs to go back and figure out, you know, what they need to do to get a yes vote. So...
I think we, we have a big, other agenda item.
Yeah. I would, I would say that, that it seems like the council wants to see things on the map. So if that's, if, uh, if we're saying, if what you want is one house on 11 acres, then put that down. If you want to have it as five lot, or five lots of one day, or five residents, geez, to, to show it.
But if we consolidate, deed restrict even more of the units in the apartments, does screen up the units on the back.
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
That's fine.
That's fine with me because you're talking in the middle of the mouth.
The note would, would sound something like, um, you know, nothing in this master plan prohibits future subdivision, um, the parcel three according to the base zone in the future.
Yeah.
And, uh, as long as the, and we've specified that, you know, the, the total development would still need to be restricted. 80% of it would still need to be restricted. You'd have to work on that flat mode, but...
I do.
If that's what you intend, that's what, you know, would need to be approved.
That's, that's, that sounds good.
It's painful, but we get them.
And we do appreciate the, uh, the, the changes. And I hope that you don't feel like we're just trying to throw roadblocks at you, like, uh, I'm excited to, to see this come to fruition. And we just wanna make sure that we get it right because we're also getting a lot of heat or a burn in, so...
Well, and that's, that's what you have to live with. That's not what I have to live with.
Yeah, true enough. Well, I, I think that, that the whole thing is right, it's, it's going down the right road. You know, as long as it doesn't get derailed somewhere between now and the next boat.
I think, I think I'll do that.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I like daycares too. Slide one in there.
I don't want donut shops, so... Well, they've got all these kids in this apartment, don't they? You're all gonna be restricted to over 50.
It's all the 200 units.
Like this daycare crisis, you guys are unbelievable.
Look at all these families.
In two years, you'll have a policy to...
You have a major...
All right, all right.
I make them, I wanna make a motion, we go into closed session to discuss purchase, exchange, lease, or sale of real property, including any form of a water right or water sales.
Motion made by Mary McGann. Who was that? Me, second in by Terry Morris. All those in favor?
I, uh, it's unanimous at 7:45.
We need more flower shop.
Why don't we get the bottom floor of the hotel flowers?
It feels, it feels like someone's like, I'd like to have more easements legislated into the, into the...
You've got an awesome grandma you like to take care of. Your kids, a lot of us don't.
No, but that doesn't mean I wanna force somebody to build one. There's quite a bit of distance there.
We're recording?
Talking about grandma.
I wanna go, I wanna grandma like that.
You guys...
You have a grandma?
It's true. And they more Thai restaurants?
We need more grandmas. Now, we're saying, put that in the vault.
I need more grandmas.
Yes, nervous mothers. You young people. Where did your one?
I thought we were losing the old folks on that one. I was watching you guys. You guys, especially this side.
Oh, my heavens. While we're at it, why don't we tell them we've got the bottom floor of the hotel with the restaurants and bars there?
We need more speedies.
I'm working on that.
I've got one, but this meeting is just... So what's the scoop here? Are we gonna have this meeting tomorrow or midnight or what? What's it be over here?
Challenging this moment to go pee.
Oh, God.
Wait. I'm hoping it doesn't take the home, but I'm... Here we go.
Oh, Evan, our chair.
Carrie, you're trying to...
Okay, what is it? Why am I...
Your wife's chair.
Oh, bummer.
Yeah, why don't you...
Have to do something.
This is always check.
Him and nod when I'm down there.
Rory is absent.